Before we go on to the approval of the agenda, I need to pull one item from the session consideration. It's number one, the Periwinkle Event Application. So they have pulled that from the agenda today. So with that update, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with request? You've got a motion on the floor? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, before we jump into tonight's agenda, I just want to take a minute to briefly go over how we'll be moving through this meeting. I want to thank all the commissioners for coming prepared, so we're going to try something a little different. So instead of going commissioner, 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 do you really wish to go ahead and speak just to be recognized by the chair and we'll go ahead and take it from there. And hopefully pulling each commissioner will decrease some of the time. And then of course, if we can move through some of the dependent topics, we'll be best as well. Questions? All right. So we're going to move on to the presentation. We've got Sunny Day Flooding Research Project update. We've got Dr. Maiteo Hino, she's taking Dr. Catherine and I.
Thank you. Dr. Nardi, Dr. Hino, and we have probably a five-year-old, 10-year-old project. Our project is about five years old and Bofer was our first. Always running. And since starting five years ago, we've now expanded throughout the state. And we're going to talk a little bit about that today. But this is really a research update, what we've learned in the past year or so from our sensor. So when I say the sensor in Bofer, some of you may be familiar that there is a camera located on Front Street. It is right in front of the Mexican restaurants, on a pole, a light pole, and it pointed toward a storm drain. And when we first started talking to you all about five years ago, this was a flood hotspot that the town was interested in monitoring. So along with this camera, we have a sensor in the drain. And that sensor records how often and how much water comes up through storm drains. So in the bottom right is a time series from our sensor in the drain. And you can see if there are spikes that go above the road elevation, which is this dash red line. And those spikes are the tides. So sort of the tide to come up through the Bofer Stormwater Network on a daily basis. And in response to the earlier work, you guys installed a backflow prevention device to try to keep the tides from coming up into the stormwater network. Okay, so this is our sensor. The time series, our measurements are blue. And the measurements from the NOAA tide gauge over the Deep Marine Lab are pink. And you can't really tell the difference because they're right on top of each other. So this is from a couple years ago, we installed a backflow prevention device. And since then, we've still been measuring how frequently it's flooding on the road on Front Street. But also, we have completed an analysis of how well that backflow prevention device is actually working. So that's what we're talking about today. So when we talk about flooding on Front Street, the type of floods that you and I are really interested in are the ones that are not happening during hurricanes. We're more interested in the shallow, more everyday tidal-based flood events. And how we as scientists have looked at these events has historically been taught us. So tide gauges like the one in the Deep Marine Lab are over a bay or a sound or the ocean. And they can measure or conserve the proxies for what's happening on the land. And that's what I'm trying to show here with this schematic. We have our tide gauge which is located over a water body. In this circumstance, the water can come up through the stormwater network and flood over the bank. And here, the tide gauge can actually represent this type of flooding pretty well, or important type of flooding, like I showed you on that previous time series, which backed over each other. So over the last couple of decades, we've used tide gauges to try to come up with predictions of how often high tide flood events might occur in a given year. So this is a plot of best case to worst case scenario. Best on the left, worst on the right, for the number of high tide flood days per year from the Bofer tide gauge. And this is produced by NOAA. So we're here in 2025. There's, you can see the best case, you have just a handful of flood events per year. And going on to the future, like in 2050, you might have 20, 30 each best case. And then worst case, you know, upwards at 100. So this is our best guess of how often it's flooding now and in the future on the tide gauge. But NOAA has emphasized over and over again that this information is meant to look across the nation and compare flooding across the nation. Because this is a plan of local flood rates. So we've known as scientists for a long time, flooding way more frequently than our tide gauge suggests, or we speculated. So tide gauges are sparse. And in North Carolina, we only have a handful of them. You can see across the east coast, in Mexico, they're not everywhere. So not only are we measuring water levels in a bay or sound, we're not measuring them in many places or where everybody lives. So you guys are lucky if you're in Bofer that you got one right next door. But we wanted to know how good is the Bofer tide gauge at let's say predicting flooding in sea level, but not very far away? Tide gauges are also not intended to capture land-based factors, land-based factors that lead to floods. So showing here, only partial infilling of this stormwater network from the ocean or sounds. And then just a little bit of rainfall can fill up the rest of the stormwater network and the flooding. And this happens quite a bit in Bofer. Okay, so we've... Sure. Okay, so we installed a sensor in the storm drain, that's what I'm showing right here. And it measures water levels as soon as they come up through the drain. And then it reports those water levels in real time on sunnydayflooding.com. So you can all of them along with the cameras, if you will. So we can detect both those flood events. A tide gauge can get very high water levels that overtop the shoreline or completely stormwater network. But we can also get these land-based factors, these compound events of rainfall. I had the sensor installed in Bofer since 2021. And after starting here, we moved to Carolina Beach. And then on the bottom right is an image of sea level. So we extended the network to Townes. So we have a lot of sensors in Bofer County. We, once we installed all these sensors, we wanted to compare measurements of proximity. And we did that for the period of May 1st, 2023 to April 30th, 2024. And what we found was that it's flooding a lot, a lot more than what the Bofer tide gauge inferred is happening on land. So Bofer, we found there were 20 days of floods, and these are not including hurricanes or other extreme events. These were the everyday floods, 60 days in Carolina Beach, and 122 days in sea level. And we consider flooding any amount of saltwater on the road outside of the stream events. So this, we just published this work in Nature Communications. And it's drawn a lot of press in the state and across the nation, which has been, I think, really good, that people now have this flooding in a lot of our coastal communities and why it's flooding. So what I'm showing here is a number of flood days during that time. And Bofer, Carolina Beach, Sea Level, where our measurements on land are these dark blue bars. And then our best estimates from a tide gauge are in green and blue. So green is the NOAA high tide flood days. And then this lighter blue is the National Weather Service, which is more of a risk-based threshold based on the road elevation. So in Bofer, you'll see that within that time period, the tide gauge only inferred a handful of days of flooding, where in fact, we measured 20 days of flooding. So I think this was what Sunny Day's. And just a little bit away, I can see levels like 20, something. We measured 122 days of flooding. So for a short distance, the tide gauge here does not tell us what's going on elsewhere in Bofer County. So that's a flood update for you. And from here, next slide, I just want to recognize that all of it is still publicly available to you all. We've worked really hard to incorporate feedback from people in Bofer and elsewhere in Bofer County to try to make the data easier to under chance and access. So this is their new website. The cameras are still available. And we have a time series of water in the drain on the river itself. Okay, so we'll shift to discussing how that backflow preventer has been, which I believe was installed in spring 2023, if I remember correctly. If we go to the next slide. This is what the water levels in the drain looked like before it was installed. So this was in May 2022. And essentially, as we showed before, the pink line is what that NOAA tide gauge is tracking. And the blue line, which is tracking underneath it, is what we were tracking in the sensor. And so there was no valve in it at all. So the water was just moving freely in and out of the pipe. And so those water levels are tracking perfectly, to be that what we'd expect, right? Everything just moving freely in and out. The next slide, this is from July 2023. So about two months, two to three months, I think, after that backflow preventer was installed. And now you see two very distinct lines. So what's going on in pink is that NOAA tide gauge. And what you can see from the NOAA gauge is that according to what's happening out in the ocean, the water levels are higher than the road elevation. This red line is the elevation of Front Street, right at that sensor. The blue line is what our water level sensor in that drain is measuring. And so the blue water levels never get to road. They stay below what that NOAA tide gauge is measuring. And there are little delays. You can see the peak is slightly shifted off. And so what we're seeing from that is that the backflow preventer is slowing down the flow of water into that pipe. And so it's slowing it down. That's why you're going to have this shift to the right. And it's preventing some amount of water from getting in, which is why the peak never reaches the peak that the NOAA tide gauge is showing. And so if it isn't perfect, like if it weren't perfect, you'd get no water at all in the pipe. But it is definitely slowing down the water. And in this case, it's actually avoiding floods, right? Because if the blue line were tracking that pink line perfectly, then you would have seen water on the road here and here. But the blue line, actually, the backflow preventer slowed down enough water that it kept the water levels below the road on each of these days. So that was in July 2023. This is a more recent picture. So this is from April 2025, which was one of the king tide, one of the highest high tides of the year. And what you're seeing now is that the curves are still different, but there isn't as much of a difference as there was in that last picture. And so you still are getting some, especially the shift in time, the peaks are shifted in time. But it doesn't seem to be having the same effect on the height of the water levels as it was before. So if you just toggle back one slide, like this big gap here, before the slide again, is a much smaller gap now. And so it may be just related to the wear on the backflow preventer itself. But it does seem like there's going to change in performance of that backflow zone. So in that first year after installation, we went through all of our data. That backflow preventer, it was 54 flood events. So that's 54 times when that, according to the tide gauge, the water levels in the creek were high enough that there would have been water on Front Street and there wasn't water on Front Street. And so it definitely is having an effect. That doesn't mean there was no flooding, right? So as Catherine said, we still thought 20 days of flooding from 2023 to 2024. And it seems like in more recent time period, the backflow preventer is performing a little bit differently than it was at the beginning. And so we might be seeing a decrease in, in kind of this rate of avoiding flooding. And of course, the backflow preventer is preventing the water from the bay from coming in this way. It can't do anything about rain falling, right? Because the rain can fall, and if the rain has a word to go, it still has a word to go. And so no matter what the backflow preventer is doing, there's still going to be rainwater coming in from other sources. But it does look like from what we can see at the beginning, there was definitely an impact from that backflow. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for those who came in?
Laura, you're saying that that backflow preventer, do we need to change it out?
It could be related to maintenance reasons. Do you know, in Carolina Beach, which is another one of our partner communities, they've got these on like all their outfalls. And I think they go and clean them out pretty regularly. Every three months, they go and clean them. I think they just get a lot of gunk in them. And I think that can affect the seal.
It's not just gunk. It's simple re, like it's stuff within these backflow prevention devices. So one of the benefits of having the sensor on Front Street is they'll actually track the people that's, we can work with you all to check, track them from there. But it blocks that falls. And I don't think they're all out of the backflow prevention device. So for something to keep in mind, there's some utility here. But we need to work with them for some of that.
Can I ask staff a question about the backflow preventer? I guess that's saying, would it be you that I asked tomorrow?
Sure.
Yeah, about what is it? Do you see anything visually that could be decreasing the performance of the mechanism itself?
Do you, last time, it's very really low tide, you can look under the dock and see it. It did look like there was a couple of oysters growing out there already. Of course, they advertise them as, you know, oyster proof. But still get oysters no matter what. So I think we're with Mark on doing this plan, see if we can possibly get down and scrub someone else off. And it can be pretty tough. All in Carolina, we should see what they're doing as far as maintenance goes.
Okay. Have y'all seen that these devices are like, are they covered in anti-filing paint? Or do you know how, they're kind of self-linge, if they do at all? I'm not sure what the materials are.
Ours is made out of rubber. And as far as we could tell when we inspected it, there's no, there's really no coating on it. It's just, it's just green up rubber. We did try, we did try coating the entire thing in the surface, see if that would help. But doesn't seem like it lasted long here. I think we should try it in the surface.
Thank you. And thanks for this data. This is super exciting to see. It really is showing a lot about the performance of those.
Is this the first of its kind of being done, this type of study out there? Do you have any others in here to the problem? See what the, Joe might, the response for this type of backflow preventer, it's very urgent to market the entire pile of code.
Backflow prevention devices are everywhere now. They're our best band-aid for this type of flooding. In terms of, do we have drains instrumented? There's some folks in New York that have installed sensors. I don't know if they're on drain with backflow prevention devices. But we talked to a lot of coastal managers across the state, and having fire timing and delayed performance, reduced performance is not uncommon. This is, if we can take another look at this here and another angle, it did prevent 56 floods. And I think that's a big win, that we should emphasize here. So yeah, it can be better if you clean it more often. But it's doing a good job too.
And you will continue to do your research?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see how this continues over time and continue to come back in our core and what we learned about flooding in your community as long as we continue to get it. But yeah, we're rested and to monitor. Hope you guys make this.
Couple questions. How many devices do we have in Bofer? When was it installed, when I'm looking? 21. And roughly, what does that device cost?
It costs about, the whole project, including installation, costs $17,000.
What does a device cost?
Device itself costs $10,000. And yes, currently, we only have one of that type installed. There is another one of different types installed at the end of Dan Street, West End of Dan Street. We're considering replacing that one with a similar type to this one. There was another smaller one that was installed by Moonrakers. I don't know if that has been replaced or not.
So how many do you think are in our community, in the town of Bofer altogether?
That's, that's the only three that I know of. And then there's three more that are supposed to be installed with the USDA projects. Two on Front Street at the same location, and then one, one more on the end of Creighton Street near Mulberry. So altogether, that would be six of those projects.
And does anybody, Mark, or you, have a perception of how many pipes possibly are affected by two-way water?
That's certainly something we've been looking at. So after, after we get done with the round of USDA projects, we can look at other pipes that would be good candidates for them.
So from the expert standpoint of, what main areas do you see, you covered a lot here with the backflow and there was a good understanding here. What other major areas do you see, you've mentioned rain, what else do you see that affects water flooding in general?
Here, wind. Just a little bit of wind. Can't really pilot water on the shelf, water in the sounds. Even during our, our first king tide event, groundwater flowed a little. And I'm not really sure how much groundwater flowed. There's so much treatment here, it's kind of hard to know where groundwater is going. Yeah, I have six tides, rain, winds, groundwater, that's all top seafreshore.
Our problem, and you may not have given us this information, but our problem is roughly half of our sewer usage today is caused by other that flow. So it's very, to me, this is one of the drivers of it. That's why I've been looking at that.
Yeah, we should mention that we have another colleague that we work with, Dr. Natalie Nelson, who has been doing water quality studies here during the making tide floods. And she worked with somebody at your wastewater treatment facility to get the pumping rates. And that's very clear.
Set out with her.
Thanks for that data.
Yeah. You have any specific recommendations that have come from any area of the knowledge that you've been involved in specifically with Bofer?
About what to do about that?
Yes.
You know? I think that's a lovely, very lovely question. If you're pumping more saltwater, what does that mean? And I'm not a wastewater person, but I work for Bofer.
Oh, sure, in New York.
Okay. I don't know what the question, I don't know what it's doing, but you're not the only community that has this concern and is pumping down saltwater during high tide floods. So I think the more data we can buy from you guys, and try to understand how it's impacting the bodies and the ability to break down waste, the better. I don't necessarily know how to avoid that, other than increasing permit. So we're, I'm not sure.
How much of, how much of the tide issue which we are living with and which we're, which we're, have some fiduciary responsibilities, has to do with, I'll just call it the astronomical group of, of who, of Moon, Earth, all of that, actually? How do you, just give me your opinions on that?
Are you meaning how many of these floods are due to high tide floods versus springing?
Well, particularly the, what I call the astronomical group of the best, you know, not necessarily lies in time, but what's, what's controlling, what's driving tides from your professional opinion?
Okay, inside. Yeah. But this is all atop sea level rise. So yeah, it's flooded here during high tide for a long time. But we have increasing frequency of those types of floods because of rain and sea levels. So this is really a report card to look at, state about how often it's flooding now. And we will continue to see those numbers go up. It will change year to year, as our tides change year to year. But it will continue to go up because sea level is going up.
You use NOAA's data?
You, yeah.
What does NOAA's data say about Bofer?
For the different projections? If you go back, maybe this slide, you are best. So I can't remember what the exact numbers are here. What do they rise?
Sure, 1.1 by feet in 100 years.
So that's the, if you extract a linear rate into the future, but that is not what we're doing here. As a scientist, we know that historical changes are fitting along to it. It's not how the ocean's going to respond.
So the curve, the curve, it's true.
Exactly. And we're seeing that if you put a line to just a letter L of that time series, it'll skip to hurricane.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation.
I've read articles on that from D-Raptor several years ago about tides, various tides increasing over the next 10 years, 17. You know about that or do you?
This is a very good time to do.
The peaks that we're going to see.
Oh, that you're going to get bigger tidal waves? I don't think that's true across the board. I think that is, you know, but I don't know for Bofer or except for you. Nardi, thank you so much for that presentation. Thank you for your continued work in monitoring Bofer. We'll move on to number two, with the Duke Engage students, Juan Pion LaRiga.
But I'm excited about that.
Hello, I'm Connor Dennis. I'm a rising sophomore at Duke University planning on studying public policy and environmental science.
And I'm Gianna Rodriguez. I'm a rising senior at Duke University, public policy with minor.
This summer with the Duke Engage program, we've been here in Norfolk since May fourteenth, working with the town of Norfolk uh on what this has to do with lot of lot spaces and the potential for third spaces in downtown Norfolk. We'll explain where exactly this context is happening as we progressively. That is why we're here.
Yeah, and just to get us started off, how do you know what it's a parade everybody on what you that you're just. No, um just for a formal definition, a third space is space for importals, pre-so. All, this is a relatively new concept and was created by the Eric. Early eighties. And essentially, these are spaces in which, um you know, community cohesion and connection can be intense. Um so it's not exactly your home or your workplace, but kind of a separate third thing um in which, you know, people can come together. Some examples can be malls, movie theaters, or in, as we'll talk about, more parks here.
And under that umbrella of third spaces is what are known as green spaces. As you might imagine, they're often green, as you can see. One example, or it can range in size between just a little park downtown to Croten National Forest, where I visited some of my friends a couple of weeks ago. Uh but as the EPA outlines, there are all collateral benefits that come with having green spaces, ingredient infrastructure in your community. There are environmental benefits, ecosystem services, help with erosion, air quality, water quality. There are social benefits, you know, healthier outcomes for citizens, when they have opportunities for fitness and fresh air, movement, simply getting outside. And economic benefits, when these beautiful places attract people to bring themselves to drive over and attend the local businesses. Uh so all around, it's a huge boon to any community that has them. And it's something that has come up in what we've been doing with the town of Norfolk. So with the context of what we've been learning this summer, uh as many of you already know. People like that. They're good. There are going to be gas tank installed in this parking lot on Front Street for the boats coming out of the docks. And we see a huge window of opportunity here to make something happen with this space. Uh since everything will be, or many parts of it will be torn up and put back together. So after that disruption, the main component of what we've been looking at is what happens to that space when it gets put back together? It's right next to the beautiful John's Union Park. So we spent some time there and thought about what the role of this new space after this disruption could look like. Uh was my reading the uh. So one of the main first or one of the early sources of that was that community conversations are based on by the Norfolk waterfront operations and finance committee. There are two categories that were looked at. First, first were the physical community cards that people submitted. As you can see, most popular response, but it was asking what should the parking lot be after the disruption? Uh was a green space or third space in some capacity? Followed up by seven people who just said it should go back to the parking lot. We got a lot more responses on the um on the online survey responses, just under one hundred. And it's a little more evenly split. The most popular option was the parking qualifier, which is essentially, yes, we'd like to see a green space or third space, but only if we can make up a lost parking elsewhere in town. Uh following that is flat space, something with, you know, permeable pavement, something that can alternate between an event space or parking, depending on the season, the time of year, kind of day. After that was turning it simply back into the same parking lot. And down and forth was turning it into a green space. As you can see, it is still pretty evenly split, very narrow margins here. But these three options show that there is interest in the community to see it turn into something new, depending on a variety of conditions or some sort of in-between dependent options. Besides looking at the responses, we also analyzed the stakeholders and the backgrounds of the people involved in the surveys, the ones who voted out. Uh so maybe there were questions asked, you know, their business owners status. Just under eighty percent were not business owners. Uh just under ninety percent were taxpayers who just didn't know that they have a vested stake. You can see what comes of those space. And just over seventy percent actually utilized the dock service there, just part of their boat, refueling, et cetera.
So a second part of our data and analysis was preliminary operational data that we both decided to go out and. So essentially, what we did is people watch for around two-hour sessions. Um the first of these sessions we did on Memorial Day at the Boardwalk, next to John's Union Park. Uh we did this from eleven A M. to one P M. and we figured this would be a very high traffic uh event. Uh so it'd be a really good day to collect data on how many people are coming through the Boardwalk and utilizing these park services. And so what we found was that around four hundred people in two hours actually passed through this Boardwalk and this park. And in terms of age ranges, we kind of separated it in um six different age ranges. And what we found were that our 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 highest age category for this stakeout was this thirty-five to fifty age range. And overall, we just got a majority of adults or quite a few kids as well. Um we grouped these people into families, couples, or friends. And not to brag, our, you know, highest grouping was this family grouping. It made sense in the context of it being Memorial Day, a lot of people are gonna come in, you know, out of town uh and visit. Go to the Boardwalk. Um in terms of most popular activities, the majority of people were either just walking through the Boardwalk or stopping momentarily um at the waterfront and not. Our next stakeout was um Friday, May thirtieth, we had an afternoon session um from two thirty to four thirty P M. In terms of the age range, it's kind of more of the same. Our highest age range here was this fifty to sixty-five group. Um so we began to have around four hundred people in two hours. Two hundred of these people actually utilized the internal space of the park. Um and in terms of grouping, we did see more couples and a lot less kids, which did make sense considering, you know, this was an afternoon session. And, you know, but it was probably, you know, maybe worse while in kindergarten school. In terms of activities, once again, you know, we got the same activities, walking through the park, walking through the Boardwalk. But also, we got quite a few people utilizing their benches as well. So people would stay for twenty, thirty minutes, um getting, you know, shade, for example, um utilizing the internal park um as a place to rest. And then we did two more, uh one on Tuesday from four thirty to six thirty, and then one on Wednesday from eight thirty to ten thirty. Again, kind of similar trends, we're getting a lot of older adults utilizing the space and not a lot of, you know, younger kids and young adults. Um in terms of grouping, it's kind of more of the same for the Tuesday session, primarily families and couples. And for this Wednesday section, um we did get quite a few people alone, which makes sense considering it was a much earlier timeframe. You know, a lot of people even went on their morning walks, morning rounds, et cetera. Um and in terms of the age ranges, we are seeing, you know, this fifty to sixty-five age range dominating across each stakeout. And our last one was on Saturday, June seventh. We wanted to do kind of another high-traffic or high-volume uh day. Unfortunately, we were thundered out, so we turned on the stage for thirty minutes, you know. It was raining a lot those two weeks. Um but we saw around a hundred and fifty people, you know, utilizing the park space uh and the Boardwalk. Um something that we told you that we didn't really see in any of the other days is that this twenty to thirty-five age range had. A lot higher. And we did see quite a few bubbles, um you know, some stuff that we just haven't seen in our other sessions, which we thought was pretty significant to consider. Um in terms of activity trends, it was, you know, more or less the same. A lot of people were either using the park benches to sit, um walking through the Boardwalk, you know, stopping at the waterfront, stuff like that, but nothing drastically different.
With big rock coming through, that wasn't super surprising to see a lot of people coming out of there. So when we're focusing on third spaces specifically as to the potential of this area, permitting a park, for example, or an extension of John's Union or something else entirely. Uh we analyze survey responses from the twenty seventeen Parks and Rec Board Community Survey. Uh so there's already pretty high demand, given there's a vote out for things like outdoor concerts or movies in the park, which work well with a sort of open, flexible space that is. Uh it's also, again, as I mentioned, in the core of downtown, a very popular area, people passing through to different businesses and restaurants. And again, there are already plans to alter the area. So a destruction is already happening, there's a chance for us to make some after after that, one of the gases. So one further benefit is that it's a passive park, so compared to something like Randolph Johnson Park or Splash Pad, there are lower annual operating costs because it's just going, it's just going to be there for the public to enjoy without any, any intensive spending on on each year. And then here's some, sorry, here's some of the benefits that the community would like to see in the space that we thought could use here, such as Picknick Real Area, uh the formal stages of that one, which again echoes the event, the interest in having an event space, as well as potentially some open lawn space, maybe a more of a green space type of thing. But there was a lot of communities interested in seeing if it should be on a park.
Yeah, and so we also like to acknowledge some of the pieces of this data that we're using and this like preliminary operational data that we collected. Um in terms of the community survey data, uh around, you know, six hundred and fifty people responded to this survey. This is only fifteen point eight percent of the estimated twenty seventeen population of Norfolk, so we're not exactly getting a lot of different demographics. So, you know, we thought that was really important to consider that, you know, not everybody's voice is probably on that survey. And, you know, more of the same in the waterfront survey, there's only a hundred and ninety people that responded to me locally online and. Um in terms of our stakeout data, we also acknowledge that it's not significantly significant. We didn't exactly use the scientific method method. It's more so us, you know, going there ourselves, observing what we see and kind of collecting that data on our own. Um obviously, there are room for errors, Connor and I talk about, you know. We had trouble categorizing people to certain age ranges sometime, you know, we're in fracture because, you know, we're we're doing eye tests here. Um and so there were a lot of assumptions there as well. And in terms of threats, uh in terms of, you know, changing the space, Connor and I really thought that there was two broader categories, the economic impacts and the social impacts. In terms of economic impacts, um we thought that probably the, you know, most prevalent problem would be resistance from businesses and tourists, or just in general, people who prioritize parking here. So if there is a loss of parking, there is maybe a lot of resistance from people um who want those spaces. Um, you know, we also thought it was important to consider some funding constraints and, you know, how construction could impact businesses downtown. And in terms of social impacts, it's kind of more of the same than any, we do believe there could be large community pushback due to this, you know, any type of renewed parking, because it is already hard to get parking downtown. Um it's very car-dependent in the area, so residents who rely on driving and parking um will naturally have some protection against that. And as well, you know, we tried to think a little bit about accessibility and, you know, any perceived exclusivity of the various space that would be put in here, you know? Um we're just trying to think about people who can and can't access the space, um if there are, you know, parts of the population that we're not getting here in terms of what we're gonna do with the space.
So we're brainstorming some things that could come next if the town decides to keep learning about the potential of this space. Uh something we've discussed would be more personal surveys, having a table or a tent out there and actually talking face-to-face with people versus just looking at, you know, survey responses on an Excel spreadsheet. Um a wider net, pushing it out to every possible channel. I know some of the surveys have been utility bills on the website. I think whatever's available probably helps to get every corner of the community, whether that's social media and mail and person, et cetera. And one key thing that we thought was missing, at least in the community survey responses, was were the voices of business and business owners. Only four out of the one hundred or so responses actually owned a visit in downtown Norfolk. So it's definitely important to hear what they have to say. They're obviously key stakeholders in here and in downtown. And lastly, we probably could have thought of the two tax law or make a trial, some sort of event space, a third space, demo, even if it's not completely re-gaming the whole space by just having a concert or a fun night out in that parking lot, is seeing what the turnout's like, seeing what happens to it. But we thank you for this opportunity. We greatly enjoyed this project and, but hopefully we have uh further further yelled learning about this. Thank you, welcome any questions. The community survey responses that were shown, sorry, those were done by the waterfront operations and finance committee um before we got here, but they did have a section of that, it was the the taxpayer segment, uh so I guess it was, I mean, pertaining to their residency here. I don't think there was specific question about, or there was. That was pretty much reflected in the tax bank matters. That was the most, around ninety percent were taxpayers here in residence.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So in your research, you noted up a few hundred people coming through, and some of them really weren't doing much of anything special walking, you know, to do with this stuff. If you, if we could have increased that green space or put more activities in there, you think people would have been gone to that space more, maybe stayed a little bit longer, felt like they had a greater purpose other than looking at the water, if we could have added some other attraction there?
Yeah, definitely, especially with some of the kids we saw, um I actually saw quite a few kids like climbing up the trees, so.
Okay.
Um to report this part.
It's a nice spot, but if it was more for you, just fix that, expand that. But again, their consideration was, uh someone in the community guards called out, that's a contradiction of having a space to bring more people downtown, but losing parking because of it, so fewer people actually accessed it. But I think personally, I would, I would enjoy that if it was extended there uh to take that advantage of that lot of space.
Well, people out in town. More of that. Indeed. And the ice cream called both one, they have a line up going around.
Oh my gosh, that's a creeper.
Yeah, that was bringing that up. Did I get an A?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, thank you for all that you've done. Being part of the community was really a big part of your project, you're actually a part of that and. So I'm, you know, so we did, we can just say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your nice. Right, so now we're gonna move on to. Maybe we'll talk to you very good, just to make sure that I saw that correctly. So we're gonna move on to what's the Norfolk waterfront operations and finance committee that's a fuel farm installation. That is seeking organization to provide for the funding that's available.
Oh, thanks. Uh we can close a lot of that for you, except to detail. We would like to go over today and seek seek additional staff of authority, which would be needed for. Two weeks ago, we had a conversation about the F three agreement contract and we were able to get the boat to move to there. And so we have a brief narrative there to tell you that we're in those negotiations. My office and Beagle have been communicating about F three, we've had multiple meetings. And we are working through the draft of that contract and do anticipate bringing it back as early as the. The other piece that we were tasked with was to determine what the status and options were pertaining to funding and installation of fuel. And we had communication with F three on a particular topic. We also want to let the board know that we had preliminary conversations with local lenders to determine if there would be funds available. If so, what the potential for that rate would be. What we have today is a four point seven, four point seven-five percent interest rate is what we potentially anticipate could come back at a quicker loan. And that was estimated in a sixty-month or five-year investment. And that was estimated in a sixty month or five year investment. When we shared that data with F three, they were very amenable to the conversation of being a private party would need to seek substantially higher than five percent rate. So that inadvertently would stop the conversation, we believe, because we'd be here tonight asking you if you had two choices, a potential rate of return that would be three to four times greater than five percent or five percent below. We assumed you would probably want to seek local lending at the sub five percent interest rate. We'll pause there to affirm that subject. Okay. Didn't want to jump too far ahead of the curve there. So where we are at that point, is we had multiple meetings with the local government commissioner called the LGC. And the LGC indicated that whether we chose to go on a private part, public, triple B, public, private partnership and/or any other mechanism with that private part, it would still trigger all the steps necessary for the LGC's approval. We thought we were working on a solution that may have fast tracked us on the fuel farm, but we found out through LGC that's not. So if we were to pursue either the path forward with F three as a funding agency or to a local lender, it would require identical steps and potentially could even be longer with the public, private partnership or that management style.
That, that's accurate.
Please, yeah.
You know, a financing, a lending from a bank, that's what the LGC does every time they meet that, that's within the mold. Everybody knows how that works. A public, private partnership or similar arrangement does not necessarily fit into any routine mold that the LGC is, um, is to see. And so, um, in our discussions, we asked, would it be possible that if we went, at the partnership joint venture route, would it actually take longer to go through that process with the LGC? And they said, yes, that's certainly a possibility. They would not call it a certainty, but, um, they highlighted that it's a high, high possibility. So, um, been trying to shorten the process, we might infer, I mean, length of the process perhaps, considering.
Bailey mentioned, Christie, if anything we're sharing is inaccurate, if you jumped in from the back, or you can come right here. So when we had a conversation about the LGC and the lending, the LGC indicated that we needed to act swiftly and put a request proposal together. And so, uh, Christie and I worked very swiftly and late into the evening to get that out with an opportunity to advertise it. And she has since shared that with local lenders. We posted it to our website and taken all precautionary steps in advance of today's meeting. And then we were also instructed by the LGC that we'd need to move very swiftly if you would like to get on their agenda for August. To get on their August agenda, it required us to advertise on the RP which we crafted. Responses from those local lenders, whether they'd be interested in what their proposed rate package is due back to our offices to Christie's intention no later than sixth third. Because they would require us to apply on seven, so June thirtieth, the, uh, rates packages would be due back from the lenders. And we would have to turn that rate around the very next day and apply to the LGC and submit our application to be considered on their agenda in August. So what we would need today is if this is the process you'd like to move forward with, keeping us on track, we would need authorization for staff to apply to the LGC on that traditional funding. They also asked a series of questions, which we've been able to put together answers. A brief narrative of where a fuel farm would go, what the estimated cost of a fuel farm would be based off the Oakes Graving proposal that was submitted and received. What would be the schedule values, which we had access to? And what would be the potential collateral, if any, and the mechanism of repay that note, which would be our assumption derived from the Marine's contract and reserve cash that would come from that revenue stream, specifically year two we're tied to the city. So we have been working at, at very quick speed to answer all their questions, multiple meetings. And that is the overarching process as it sits today, six point three missing major factors. We'll slow and take a breath, there's a lot of information there. There's a lot of steps that would follow, but does that, that brings you to where we are today. As we were instructed to staff to do two things simultaneously, from F three and begin the process with local lenders.
It always is, I can teach you that always, say that, um, I'm definitely opposed to use any, uh, uh, budget money. I have no problem with us going to a lending. I definitely do not use the money out of our budget, I just don't think it would be, would be fair and usually good. Citizen money, G and B this project that. That's been everything, but I'm just supposed to. But, but I would definitely be in favor of getting, saying yes to staff, proceed knowing that, uh, lenders.
Just letting you know, there are.
Hey, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. Um, I'm having a little bit of a difficulty hearing, but I did hear, uh, much of what Matt said. And I think what Melvin said is he's not in favor of the funding through the general fund, but very much in favor of instructing, uh, the town staff to continue with the process of, um, securing the external loan. And I would, uh, agree with Commissioner, uh, Cooper that we should continue with, uh, securing the external loan and instruct the staff to, to continue with LGC.
A couple of suggestions, uh, I'm in favor of this, I'll make a motion, ask him to approve or admit. But I, I think in doing this, and in light of what Melvin is saying, I would urge everybody to figure out exactly then what the source of repayment will be from, which means we need operating estimates so that we can gain the confidence at this board level that the repayment of this will be through the non-governmental operation of the dollars, one. Secondly, uh, and I will make a motion subject to that favor of this deal. I would also add that I would like this board to consider permitting the manager in addition to these discussions, which he's already having to swallow by the hose, uh, on the dates. Give him the permission to, to explore any alternatives that met, that he may run into that are in the benefit of the town vote. I think there may be some other alternatives out there. I'd like this board to give him the authority to keep, to keep an open mind to other alternatives if they're presented to the manager. That are in the best interest of the town. I'd like to give, I'd like to give the manager a little, even more rope than we gave him in the first session.
I mean, um, I'll have to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Oliver. Um, I know what some of those opportunities might be and, um, in respect of some nondisclosure agreements that are out there, you know, won't get into any details, but basically, um, overall, just make a metaphor here. If we crack a door and a foot comes in the door, then the whole body may come in the door down the line and that may not be in the best interest of the town. So, um, I think we have some direction here. I think if Matt runs into something that looks really good, he's gonna call us and tell us and, uh, but I'm not sure that I would, um, want him to waste his energy, um, entertaining any, um, private partnerships.
Um, so, I mean, I would imagine if you don't keep, you know, like it for this seed money, so forth, when we start construction. I mean, obviously when you have an extract loan, it basically takes the loan as a, as a direct, like, a quote.
Wait, that's the second step, so I can answer that, great question, do you might, you want, want to take that with that?
I agree, we have not a first, yeah.
So if we follow this chain of command and this schedule structure, we'd be asking today six point three for permission to move forward with the LGC. We would need that authority. We would see the, the loan documentation and hopefully get positive responses no later than June thirtieth or what's. We would put together our application, apply on seven one, and we would move forward. What we would do is then come back to this floor on seven fourteen, which would be your regular July meeting with two pieces of legislation. One is the consideration of a design build contract with the vendor of choice, which is elevated by B-wook, as Oakes Graving, the vendor of choice for our design build piece. And then what would tie to Dr. Piccolo's question is, how would you pay for that if you started to process any design? There's been a lot of conversation around fuel tank placing in order to things pertaining to that design. The LGC said that there's an option for.
An improvement resolution. And that is basically a declaration by this board that any cost, traditionally soft cost, but not necessarily, would be reimbursed to the town from the thinnings. So I'm looking at Mr. Cooper when I say this, we would be fronting town money, but we would get repaid with the loan clauses, so there would be a flow there. It is very typical financing, uh, we did this for the USDA project, Christie. And, um, just about every public construction contract financing, you see, you see this technique because you will necessarily begin in very cost before the financing, if not for the financing. And so the other element that the, uh, Jalopyor team meeting would be the adoption of an improvement resolution. So we could begin extending funds on the projects to be paid back with the loan clauses.
Simple term, a reimbursement.
Reimbursement rather than resolution.
And what kind of money, what kind of money the town will be paying for this?
Sure, please. So currently today, we have around two hundred thousand dollars in the reserve account, a little bit north of, specific to this project for the, the marine. On the design bill, minimal cost, which would be all those preliminary conversations we talked about, getting the, into, the design engineers planning together with the contractor, beginning the permit process, geotechnical work, and to try to pin that down would be potentially a thirty thousand dollar figure. And I, I want to tell you that that's an estimate. So if it comes in higher low, I'll cache it, it was the best gas on six two three. So soft cost, slightly full. Now, the big question here is, would we have to put a hundred thousand dollars down, which is the estimate of an actual physical fuel? I have real time information today and new data. It's no longer a twenty six week lead time. We have it in writing today, the lead time is now thirty weeks. And that came to us in writing today, which is why I didn't feel it was necessary to send you an email at two twenty five. And so we're holding, so we just received the letter, once I get back from my desk, we'll forward you that. So the conversation of securing a space would have to happen sooner than later. And once the designs or the drawings were available, then you would notify the tank manufacturer. And the tank manufacturer said there would be a potential for up to five weeks to change the drawings, and that's it. So the reality is, if you do the design bill seven fourteen, you really need to know which direction you're going. What size tank do you want, where are you putting the tank? You need to have your preliminary conversation above that. So I, we were trying to anticipate questions that you may have, what's the soft costs? What are potentially any hard costs? How much do we have on the end? What's the lead time that's changed as of Friday today? And then the conversation of when does that fall out? So thirty weeks from July fourteen is gonna put you twelve in January. And the intended goal here is to begin construction first quarter of twenty twenty six. Because you want to be able to flip a switch on or around the first of April. So there's all those pieces. And I, we always let the person that, uh, and what we, we call this an economic development, the person that shoots the duck out of the sky is the one that's supposed to get the credit. So Kyle, can you give us some good news?
Um, well, some good news on the permitting side is because our property on waterfront is located within an urban waterfront designation by CAMA. We do not have to meet their CAMA setback rules. So that's a huge piece. And in addition to that, um, they would consider issuing us the installation permit as a minor permit rather than a major CAMA permit. If we can get the division of water resources to agree in any other major, uh, group. Otherwise, it would have to go through what's called the NEPA process, and then it would be a major CAMA permit. But the positive for us is the cause it is designated in that urban waterfront. There could be the opportunity that water resources would say, you're, you're okay, so long as that CAMA is okay.
When we, when I was best in terms of, um, going back to that, we're two hundred, you said two hundred thousand? And that is in reserve. Um, the, the tank size, that would actually would have to come from the B-wook committee, is that, that correct?
There's already a recommendation, there's already a recommendation that a single tank measuring twenty six thousand gallons, bifurcated in twenty thousand gallons designated initially diesel, and the other six thousand gallons would be held in reserve if we opted, chose to, or ended up selling regular gases.
And you're saying earlier that we can flip the switch, would be in April or the thirtieth?
No, sir, that's the target goal, and that's what the B-wook committee and, I believe, management company would like to see happen as voting season is ramping up, they want to be ready, really able to and ready able to sell fuel by May. That's the target goal that we keep, that's the data to speech.
No, no. Right, but, um, we have, you have.
That's incorrect.
But that's based on that one specific tanker in that one specific location. And that tank not known at that location, is there a possibility that the tank came from that location? Or is there an additional remediation at that location, and the estimate could change?
So the current estimate, and I made you off by a couple of thousand dollars, I believe on the single tank estimate was eight hundred fifty six or eight hundred fifty eight, so let's just say eight hundred sixty thousand dollars plus remaining. The dual tank option was just north of nine hundred thousand. And your previous contractor that we had looked at earlier in the year was upwards of one point one million dollars for a tank installation in the same location. The only, the real mitigating factor that would potentially impact costs the most would be whether or not there was contamination or fill in that area that would need remedied, removed, and or replaced. For all the information we currently have boots on the ground shows that that is a clean fill site. And we are going to pursue and provide core sampling to validate any of those assumptions as swiftly as possible.
Well, we do know that's possible.
We have core sampling that would be to the furthest east portion of that site, which is not where the tanks are desired to go today. We have a desire to put the tanks to the front street side of the western parking lot, which would be the northern side of the park. Running the tank parallel to the sidewalk area, and that's where we would need to validate the assumptions.
Do we have additional cost estimates on the sidewalk and the turnout for the, um, for the tanker?
No, sir, it's not.
And the moving of the utilities, could that be also included if this is slowing down?
Which is why we've looked at between one and one point two million dollars yesterday.
So we're looking at possibly two hundred thousand dollars to do that?
No, sir, we have random estimates, we're just working on the ground numbers. Uh, you really would have to make a declaration that that's what you'd want us to go to. There's a lot of pieces of, we haven't got. There's a lot of pieces of, we haven't got any.
So what I'm saying about that, there's nine hundred for the tank.
Plus your money.
Plus your money. But so with the, the loan right now that you're looking at from the bank, it's around.
And we, we told the lenders, and there are, there should be nine hundred thousand and one point two million?
The exact word is not one point two.
Okay, and that whole money only can be used, or if it's true, we're not, used only for the tank installation. It'd also be used for the, um, infrastructure of the term area.
It would be used for this project, yes, sir.
The whole project, right.
That is the intent. The equipment and the improvements related to the equipment purposes, that's the intent today. Um, and hopeful that you would, it's, for example, you were building a construction, you're building a home, and you always know that you have a dollar amount you're starting at. You probably are going to run into the unknowns of each construction project. You anticipate a contingency. So in this particular case, the contingency is plus or minus three hundred thousand dollars. It's the utility line of patients movements. There's a fire hydrant in that particular area that will need to be relocated, or in a curb moving up those things. And then the infrastructure to the point of sale, a tank is only as good as its communication strategy into that dock master situation to run the chain.
Yeah, on completion of the, on a closer one, can we, that start of the payment of that one, right?
That's correct. It's, it's basically the equivalency of a bridge loan for any construction project, and then your mortgage would be that sixty month period with a potential payback of two hundred thirty to two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year, dependent on the total amount.
Yeah, and completion is dictated by, who's, who determines what that date is.
Well, the date of the completion would be as swiftly as possible. The first trigger is receiving an actual physical payment. Uh, the second trigger would be all your curbing. So you would be running in parallel, you're permitting for that site, you're core sampling all your geo work. The contractor would be doing the design of that space, and they would do the design bill to reduce your overall costs. So at this point, knowing if we can move forward with execution of a contract as early as seven fourteen, then we would notify the contractor on the morning of seven fifteen. My assumption is the tank would be, then a tank order would go into line. You have to secure a place in line, just as if you were going to build a new vehicle at the Ford plant. You get a place in line, and I asked the question, like, how far do we have to, we can pick the color and the engine size of that new vehicle? And so, just like we do with fire trucks, yeah. So the window of any adjustment, they said, is up to five weeks after that, you're going to have to. So that's what, their order of materials, and they're getting them from.
I'm just wondering when the date was, when the loan was closed, you have to restart payment, and then basically, if the, if it's turned off, so we can actually start.
Yeah, we don't have all those pieces yet, so that's all going to be in flux, depending on how the project goes. And that's very similar to what you're doing currently today with USDA. And so, we want to make sure that we have an extra, accurate picture of what is needed to get an actual and accurate inspection. And then each of those pieces are subsequent to, you selected a vendor, or working on the permit process, if you have to go a hundred days to the major, it's going to have a little bit more cost than the moderner. The biggest kicker here is, have you picked a vendor, have you picked a site, and do you order your tank? Because if you don't do those three things, there's a zero percent probability of a fuel farm in first order.
And that drop, that they order everything, where it's part of, we're going to all in, if we set the fifteen, we make the tank.
Yes, sir, I believe so, and I, I assume you have a serious question.
Do we, Matt, do you believe that we can water a tank without having done the testing of the, uh, area which will be installed?
I would not recommend that professionally, I would have that geo testing done first, and we have been in communication with the gentleman that's in charge of that testing, has provided with the primary vendor that we're looking at. So we contacted both grading, and they've contacted Henry, and we're in communication with Henry, he puts on as swiftly as possible. And I would very much like to have that information back before taking orders.
So, yes or no?
To me, I work for you, I would do, if you tell me to order a tank, I'll order a tank. If you ask me, what's my professional, if that's what you're asking me, I would tell you, sir, I would be hesitant to purchase a tank before knowing that the ground you want to put it is clear, or knowing that you're willing to absorb the cost for remediation. I'll answer you very directly, but I want to be super.
I've, I've, I've done that, that's why I asked the question.
And that's why I'm trying to answer for everybody, I'm trying to answer.
That's why I asked the question.
Yes.
Testing's got to be done.
I would agree.
Uh, I think all of here, design bill contracts, methodology that the town had walked on some months ago will bear a lot of this out. And it's a two-phase process. You've got the design phase, um, during which all of these questions are answered, or most of the, these questions should be answered, and anything else in the phase. You have that firm estimate, I mean, literally, I slid across the table, this is what this is going to cost you. At that point, um, you know, you've got detailed plans, detailed construction plans, things like that, and you know, the town doesn't have to proceed with the construction at that point. Some of it with the design or the cost or whatnot, uh, we can pull the plug on it. But that's why getting started on the actual design phase, during which we'll in, incur expense. And we'll be paying the design professionals to get to the bottom of this. That's why bringing that back on the fourth thing, because that's, uh, is so critically important so we can start with that geotechnical study as well as ordering the, the, the tank, all that can be part of that design phase.
But my, my other concern with this, is time, we're ready, we're hoping to start, you know, we had a year to decide, I know looking at first quarters, uh, fixed. Now, we're also possibly, possibly running to, um, if someone's first year becomes major, major.
We thought it was a big one, so the fact that we have each an option for a minor permit, then that would expedite the process in, 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 it's actually a very positive permit.
But our past, if there is a possibility that one of the.
We firmly believe today it's a major permit. Kyle turned belief on that there was an option for a minor, which should speed us up on about a hundred days, seven thirty.
Like, so there was a second part of talking about, you said that.
Yeah, he said that it could trigger, if we didn't, if we didn't get the minor, it triggered the NECA, which goes back to the major, which is what we thought.
Tainted, I hate to say it, sorry, Larry.
We have, we have a soft, we have a good probability of getting that, however, but we don't have it.
We don't have it.
And want to be very, very clear in the level, level setting.
While I'm in favor of this, I also feel like we should put the door open until our drop, because things get pushed, where we learn about different things on permitting, and we learn about, well, now the tank's going to take even longer. I mean, these things popping up, popping up from the town, it's just, it's just a, uh, uh, so from here, we definitely have this place where this should go this way. So far, we haven't seen that, we've seen the way it's, on the way. And so, while I do believe this is a good way to go, as far as, uh, the, um, the loan, or the, central force, you get one hundred percent of the, that's it. Um, I do believe we can kind of, as long as the case that are, so that also, that can pop up, so that we go somehow, and it's getting into the second quarter of twenty twenty six, and we'll vote to the, this is your seat, so.
And, and I'd add on that, too, nothing of this takes away from our progress with F-three. All F, F-three choices have been made, nothing takes away from that, this has to do with the fuel tank. Now, that will control what you do with F-three, but I'm not going in any way F-three.
So to be clear, I think that it would be appropriate to update you that there is the backup to the backup to the backup plan. And so, from a B-wook's consideration, the primary goal is to put new tanks in, and all new policies, just physically in space. Sir, it's not aligned, but primary plan is to have the new tanks out of it. If you're running four weeks behind, six weeks behind, insert delay there. Then an above ground set of tanks is the temporary alternative solution to make sure fuel is there, and providing fuel in the existing piping system, which would be in slip fuel. Because that's what the, the vendor, the banks are asking, is this in slip? Are they above ground or it's low ground, so they're asking all these questions. Then, in, in the event of an absolute worst case scenario, the conversation has been, should we contact the years about leasing their current tanks? Since the current process isn't extended another year. We haven't been instructed to do that, but we've had informal conversations, that was something in the past with Charlie's, so that's also a choice. But the reality of this conversation is, the destiny to have those tanks in here on, that dollar amount being revenue generated and coming back is all in that pro forma contractual negotiation. And so, F-three is asking our team, will we have access to fuel, yes or no? Because then it's built into the actual design of that contract, it will become a part of the consideration. So all those things are mutually exclusive, but interdependent to develop the best and overall profitable deal to put the town in its own. So there has to be a plan, there has to be a backup to the plan, and then there has to be a catastrophic backup to that backup. And what are you doing and how are you?
Right, agreed, I think the, um, the contingency of the above ground, we've discussed that quite a bit, and it is something that's feasible, we can even talk about it during the permitting phase. Um, go ahead and envelope that into a permit, if we need to have a temporary above ground situation. Um, you know, the elephant in the room for me is leaving a door open to another, a relationship with another private entity outside of F-three, and this is not to hear others. I, I feel like, you know, we're, we're going down this road, um, I feel like in respect to the B-wook committee and to the citizens and who we gain their trust in this process, I want to keep rolling in that direction and have our contingencies, contingencies be in the above ground, um, maybe the backup to the backup to the backup for the year lease. Um, but I'm really hesitant to keep the door open to other, um, private opportunities, um, you know, since that F-three one didn't work out, I, I don't want to go there.
But you said that F-three didn't work out, the only thing that did work out was that was on the financial.
Right, that's what, yeah, did the financial side. Yeah, it should have been worse, just that they, yeah.
I, I, I would not like to see us back out of, of F-three.
Oh, no, 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 I understand.
Negotiation, but, yeah, that's not, that would not do good for the town. And I think you committed an excellent job. But I think we just need to move forward with that, turn to the tanks, and that come forward through that, and we will make decisions if we have to do the above ground one at some point. We need to be doing our own fuel risk and stopping the leasing because we're not getting one that's going to be out there leasing, so, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, and I think, you know, we're going to hit more red blocks, I mean, we're going to hit more delays, but I think, um, keeping that endpoint in mind, that we're going to, we're going to be in, in our own fuel and in charge of our destiny, and perhaps even in the long-term future, help, helping to offset some tax form for taxpayers, maybe down the line. That's one thing I'm eye on, and yeah, we're going, we're going to have some more conveniences, I'm sure that we're going to get through this, I think if we stay on.
But here goes, so I can't, it's a lot of, you can't.
Yeah.
A lot of the days.
Hopefully, we won't have a USDA hit up.
I just feel like, you know, if we have all our, because we get it done efficiently, that's not harder than, being better. Be gonna, uh, be, be in, have to do it patently, and there's, there's, you know, this is now repeated, and now partly defeated, and the business owners are upset, and the residents are upset. I, I want to make sure that it's a smooth transition. I don't want to see us, you know, creating this disaster in the waterfront, in a lot of, but that's our decision. I mean, if you don't decide that we're going to go right at it, instead of basically trying to make sure that that's a reasonable decision.
Coming back to Matt's question, I, I think all the options should be kept on the table, including the year property extension as a, as a all, just don't lose anything, because we don't know where we are. Right now, we're still trying to finalize a deal. People.
I think you're going to lose opportunities for consistently moving. You have to begin with the end in mind, and the beginning, well, as I said, we wanted to own our own fuel, and I think that's.
We can agree to that.
We agreed to that, and.
We have agreed to F-three.
We agreed to F-three.
Right. So we're making promises.
As a group, we've agreed that at some point in time, we want to be able to control our own fuel, is that correct?
I believe that's, I believe we have that agreement.
All right, you have that agreement, so when you begin with that, you want to end with that, so. But if you continue to start leaving doors open for things that come up, and even that this doesn't work completely out, start a bomb all over again, you're, you're just going in and chasing after what you don't want, which is not, you know, having that up there. So sometimes you just sort of have to follow the brake hooks. And I think you've got a good group of people that have laid out the foundation, you just have to go through, trust the process, and work it completely out. Because we, at the end of the day, we want to have, as follows, some control of this asset. And for whatever reason, you know, leasing in a town in Bochert has not only been on the best side of Bochert. So I want to be able to say that we should be able to control our own destiny for once, and not necessarily always have to look over our shoulder for something else that's worked towards where you want it to, to make where you think.
So we're seeking authorization tonight to apply to the LGC for funding your traditional manner, that's what we would need, that's our next step. If you make that in the form of motion, and vote in majority, then we would take that. Whether it's a trial or one.
I would motion that, uh, we move forward with, uh, um, staff move forward with, uh, we, uh, plan for the long way ahead, LGC funding.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed at the same rate? Okay. Everybody, thank you so much for that. Now we're going to move on to the bed hotel update, one hundred Colling Street, thank you, that area.
Yes.
We've cleared the venue.
Okay, the brand of the interview, um, Matt started, and I felt a, a, a.
Can you hear better now, Sarah?
Uh, I'm not sure, I have to hear you guys talk.
Oh, testing, testing?
Yeah, I can hear you okay, Sharon, it's just like, I couldn't hear John very well. I'll let you know.
Thank you. So we're moving on to the bed hotel update.
The, there, uh, if I may, um, remember Anna does start with the recap on page one of some of the history that the board is, uh, well aware of. I'll jump forward to at the top of page two, the latest correspondence, some of which is hot off the press as of Friday afternoon about, uh, three P.M. Uh, on behalf of the town, I propose to the property owner that we, uh, move forward on parallel as one, work on the approach agreement for the, um, deck overhang that everybody's familiar with, and that simultaneously, she could present, uh, her redevelopment plans, uh, to the town so that planning and inspections could begin that dialogue. And Kyle and I have had a, at least one conversation, perhaps a series of conversations. Informally, the way these things work is a owner, an owner's contractor, or engineer, or architect, or other professional, or meet with the town. Like, this is what we're thinking, this is what we want to do. If we go this route, what will the town require in terms of approval? Will there need to be a rezoning, will there need to be a site plan approval? Will you need to think about a variance from some of the, uh, just, uh, sausage making one-on-one, I will call it, at the, um, preliminary stage. And, uh, I will also add as an aside, this has turned into a three-party dialogue because we've got preservation, North Carolina, and the, and the, they also have a separate set of due. And they also have a separate set of duties of the property owner on the redevelopment. So, that offer or suggestion was certainly by yours truly, uh, last week, Friday afternoon. We give a response that, uh, I've reprinted verbatim in the memorandum for you. And basically it's, uh, we don't want to, they work on these simultaneous pathways. We, um, basically want to get the approachment agreement, uh, done independently. We think that is, uh, super important. And when we get that done, uh, then we'll move on with, with design. Mind you, no one has indicated to the owner that we wouldn't sign the approachment agreement. It's always been an assumption that, uh, one would be signed and one, uh, is obviously needed. It's just the timing. Uh, needs to be the status of that building, the lack of progress on the rehab. So, uh, with that said, uh, actually today, uh, I began working on the, uh, approachment agreements, uh, in earnest, if you will, assuming that's what the board was directing me to do to try to move this, uh, along. And I'm not far along with it, so we can pull the plug on it if, if need be. Um, I still maintain that even when we reach, uh, an acceptable approachment agreement, let it not be signed and delivered until we have what I've been calling milestones. We have a projection from the owner. When the owner is going to do whatever the owner needs to do to rehab this, this property. The thought of, of working with the informal consultations, was to be able to divi- develop that time horizon simultaneously so we could sync it with at least a tentative approval of an approachment agreement. This is what we're looking at. We approve the approachment agreement subject to disporcement events. But our biggest position through a little bit of a monkey wrench in that one. But, uh, that's where we are. Fortunately, we do not have much leverage, uh, over the, uh, property owner or the property, uh, unless the board, for some reason wants to pursue the condemnation or demolition dynamic option either through, uh, substandard building concept with the building code and the town ordinances or directly in Superior Courts and abatement action. Um, I don't know that I've heard from the board to date, but, but that's a, a serious option on the table, but perhaps it is. So, right now, uh, the next move is to finish the approachment agreement, um, get it back before the board for your input, perhaps informally outside of the meeting and give it to the head of preparation with Carolina to see if we can get something to stick and some progress to start, start the, so. Uh, I'm glad to answer any questions and we'll probably continue to add to this memo. It's, uh, things are forward, forward across.
Last thing I would like to see is for that to tear that building down. But I would like to have a conversation with the community first and see what their feelings. Over the years, they have all, always stated that they wanted that building to remain as it is. Should have proven it, but not tearing it down. But at this point here, we're not seeing to be getting any type of workmanship from, from the owner. I mean, she seems to just keep dragging things on out. Uh, and it, it just, it landed a lot of things and the building is, you know, one good area can come by here and it, it'll probably wipe that building out.
Just a couple of things. If I may, I'm not, uh, I want to be clear. I'm not advocating for the demolition round. I'm just identifying that as a potential option and I've not heard from this board any desire to seriously pursue that, that avenue. I think what you would hear from the property owner is the, uh, you know, the town's been dragging the thing out. Uh, I've heard that. All I can do at this point is to resolve any call whatsoever that the town was dragging anything out. That's why I started working on the approach.
It's definitely not from us dragging it out. We, myself and, and the mayor had a conversation with her about three years, about three years ago. And she made a lot of promises. Uh, every now and then she'll get somebody to put new rap on the building. Uh, I think about a year ago, somebody went in one day, did some work inside and haven't been back since.
Well, at the end of the day, all we can control is, uh, what the town does and the stuff that the town takes. And by instructions from your, uh, manager and your management team, we're going to keep this at the top of the list and push it along as quickly as legally possible, which I know is slower with speed.
And I would, I would, I was very thankful for various historical overview. What I'm asking, since I moved to the table, is that what you would like us to? I would like clarity from the board that this is a top priority for you or two, three. Need to know where it is on our desk so that we serve you. But wanted to have that clarity here today. And I think this is an important factor that I'm overstepping. Chief, is there anything that you want to indicate about the safety of the structure?
This part's safety instruction. I have a early entry. If something would start happening on that property, I'm not prepared.
There's a no entry for the fire department into one. Thank you. So we, we wanted to share that with you. That there, there's that issue. I wanted to share that. And then second, find what you want us to do so we can serve you well.
And currently is it that the building is condemned, my friend? Say that. The, the condemnation order was signed and the building is condemned. It just, there was no, the demolition order was pulled, uh, years ago. But I believe the building is currently condemned. Is that correct?
There was a condemnation, second condemnation, a demolition ordinance adopted by this board in nineteen twenty twenty, something like that, nineteen twenty nineteen. So, um, that directed your, your staff to demolish the thing. And in fact, um, I think the contractor to do so was mobilized and ready to start. And at the last minute, preservation and C negotiated this deal with the firm owner to buy, hopefully, uh, rehab it. So short answer is yes. And it has been deemed, uh, insufficient numerous times by your staff under the, uh, substandard well ordinances in the base.
So the prior demolition order is in existence.
The demolition ordinance, it was adopted, but I don't think.
So it's rescinded.
Yeah, my concern with this building, I would say it's, it's an important part of, it is a very important part of the building. And for years, we've tried and we've tried to, to have this building, uh, restored. And the concern too is obviously that the building is, is that shaped over there is the one that's, it's hazardous to the community. The two is also a building that might even just cave in and fall in on itself, which I think would go against even what the preservation of North Carolina is doing or maybe even what the owner was hoping to do. Um, okay. Can you speak to, you said there was an opportunity for you to be in the favor? What would that, or what would that allow for, for the town?
So the, the town has several options, uh, when it comes to demolition or abatement. I use those two, two terms, uh, synonyms more or less. Uh, at the staff level, you can go through a, say, minimum housing. I realize it's not a residence, but a, you know, minimum, uh, structure process. We've got ordinances on the books that would allow, uh, demolition. It would allow some type of emergency work to secure windows and doors and things like that. There's, that would be a side discussion to have about whether we would want to do something like that. And the cost would be basically toward to the property owner, through the property tax system. And then again, you know, demolition would, uh, be the most obvious remedy. Then separately, the statutes would allow the town to go directly to Superior Court to get a court order. Typically, when you get that order, it is ordering the owner to do A through Z, you know, bring the property up the code, repair it, secure it, remove the danger, uh, things like that. Or if not, the town can go and do it. Again, side discussion to be had about the divisibility of that. Or in this case, um, to demolish it. So you have a couple of paths to get basically to the same place, which is, um, either to do some work and secure the property, uh, or, or to demolish it.
My, my thought is at this point is to try to work with, um, the owner and possibly the preservation and C. To try to see if he intends to, that's the reservation. I know it's been, you know, this is ongoing. It's been, it's been going on, but I think understanding we'd get that timeline from the owner would be best. And I think from there, once we get that, we see if the owner is able to complete the particular repairs will be in our best interest. If not.
Basically, you try to do that. And they said, first, first thing that they need is the approachment agreement, and then they'll give you that.
Yes, sir.
Maybe.
Maybe.
And I, I mean.
Do we have, do we have any evidence of or any way to ask about, uh, any evidence of insurance that we need on this property? Promises for liability?
I did have, yes, we can always ask.
But we don't have any right to know.
No, sir. We, we do not. Uh, under any burden of an approachment agreement, we would have that right. That would be, it must have in an, in an approachment agreement.
Because I'd wager if they had any type of fire insurance on the building with the fire chief saying that there would not be any protection on it, that that insurance might be slightly at risk.
And, and I will say, I did at some point last year, I guess late last summer or into the fall, I had a, I did have a dialogue with an insurance agency representing the property owner. They, they knew this requirement was coming, and that was a good dialogue. So the insurance requirement will not, will not be a surprise.
So can we put some sort of condition that she, you know, the house be processed up or give some, you know, technical? I'm willing to be in time and I, in terms of whatever you can do, uh, go and, and talk to the people in the community about it. Cause it is, it, it does have history. And for years, they're all within saying they would not like to see that building torn down. But at the same time, uh, sometimes you just have to come to reality that, uh, something may need to.
We were told to have a plan in April of twenty four, and we were told to have start up work in August of twenty four. I believe this is June of twenty five.
But what's different now? Like, I mean, what is different now? Do we have different assurances?
Yep.
Do we, I mean, I, then we're going to get the same thing. We're, we're going to keep this thing going in the same direction.
That's what I would like to see. Some type of.
Time frame then, yes.
The last hail Mary is just using, right? This approachment agreement is the last hail Mary. If I get that, then everything is going to open up is what I'm hearing.
Right.
And that's not the case. And what her actions have been or the owner's actions have been in the past. Now you did mention that if we did this approachment agreement, let's say we did that and threw it off. There are some conditions in which we could get some information out of this. Insurance would be one of them. What's her plan and so on and so forth. But can we also put in there that if this is not done, this is your last hope?
Yes, ma'am. Um, that's depending that we're able to agree on an approachment agreement.
Okay.
But let's, let's assume that we could get there. And, uh, an encroachment agreement is not, it's not a novel, unusual type of thing. It's a pretty typical document in the real estate world, particularly in your older towns because there are fuzzy property lines, people that build things without knowing what property lines are. Um, so it's not, it's not reinventing the wheel, as they say, but assuming we can get an agreement on the table that everybody can live with. Again, I would recommend that the town not execute it deliberately until we have our time horizon, our milestones and performance. Because what will happen is you'll sign that thing.
You're going to get a.
And it will be June of twenty twenty six with Commissioner Oliver just, just, uh, uh, the, you know.
But what if she doesn't sign the encroachment agreement? Then where are we then? Do we set a timeline for you? We've got to come to an agreement about this data. We're under control of our next step.
Then, then you'll have your, then you'll have your answer about whether, um, the owner has a real intention to have this property.
I put a good amount of your signature. If we, if we advance a draft approachment, I'll put a thirty day deadline for its execution period. I also would see it taxed in the bay.
There is, there is, I'm not sure. There's no historical distinction on the building, is there? No, I hadn't said this is a historical building, which would mean we could, we did tear it down, but it's. But it doesn't have any historical distinction from the state itself. Not the thing that we know what it is, but the state itself.
You know, this is a short of the now.
It was by the state.
By the state, it is not.
Yeah.
No, that's why we're starting as well.
You mentioned that earlier.
At one time, we were talking about an option and maybe not remembering this correctly, but trying to get another person to come in and take care of the property essentially. Is that part of the abatement or is that something else?
No, it's something. So it is correct that this time around, maybe your feelings have been maybe more different because you're, you may have also been able to work with preservation and C. Currently here. So, you know, they also, I think what's different this time seems that maybe preservation and C also has interest in conceiving this and I think that may be the difference. And that's why I'd like to see that, that partnership or this kind of warning. Kind of work together and see if we can have this. Because they also have the ability, um, with their contract, with their contract to make things happen.
So that in their contract, they could possibly move it on to a different.
Without the town having to do all these things. It seems to be in the will. So, but we'll see.
Is there a reason why we can't have them copy and copy the, the F C?
Oh, uh, yes, sir. That's the, the deal that the three, um, parties would correspond together. And in fact, we got the regional representative with preservation and C and the executive director on the email chain. So, everybody's here and everything in real time.
The clarity that I would ask for is you're instructing the attorney to move forward with drafting of the approachment agreement. Is there concurrence that you would have some sort of a deadline connected to each of these steps? Because if we can get that in a form of a motion, that would be important because then everybody understands where we're going. Provides our attorney with the clarity that.
So not only do we want to have a motion to prepare the encroachment agreement, but we want to have some deliverables in there before that is actually initiated.
Yes, ma'am. I think, uh, right now, a motion to proceed with the encroachment agreement. And I think our marching order to do so with definitive deadlines on review and approval and things of that nature.
And not executing the document until we get the timeline.
What are that?
With, with, with this. The way I vision handling this thing is when it's time for this board to approve the encroachment agreement, that it be through a written resolution that sets forth various time horizons. And then what happens if you don't meet that? I eat the agreement goes away. It's never effective. So, um, I think that's a good point, but we'll deal with that when we actually agree to the, the document itself. Cause that's okay.
So the document is the care, resolution would have the sticks associated with not enforcing.
Correct.
But they ought to know what those performances are. I don't want them to be feeling like they weren't aware of what those are. So this way, like you said, that she may not like that pullout. They need to know that with seriousness. In other words, they need to know.
I have communicated that any encroachment agreement would operate at this manner.
Okay.
Um, and then the timeline, I think, is mutually agreeable. You know, we're not gonna dictate you have to be done with the building in ninety days, but we need to extract that from the owner. You know, this is your time horizon. So once we have your your time horizon, we can develop the the milestones. Preservation NC has their own set of milestones that that they also need to, uh, renegotiate. So hopefully, we'll get everybody on the same page if this is what we can find.
We have information. I asked Director Prudence to the question on taxes.
Yes, they've been paid.
All prior arrangements have been paid. They're concurrent.
Those are the documents.
Taxes have been paid.
All right. So I would like to make a motion for area to proceed with the preparation of the encroachment agreement, that the benefit deadlines are reached.
Panel Sean, for any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or is that the same way? Thank you. Now, we're gonna move on to the ordinance review, our favorite topic, and chapter one thirteen, itinerant verdicts. Matt on that one?
So I'm gonna begin this conversation, and I'd ask Kyle, that's one of me, if there's anything he needs to add, correct? But we believe that the current ordinance on file has some inconsistencies which makes it extremely difficult to enforce. I think this is a conversation that the board looked at in fall of two thousand and twenty four. I want to be very direct that there has been, it appears to be a food truck parking in a public spot, and then that led to the conversation of a push cart vendor who came in tried to follow what we would think are are rules and placed a push cart directly in front of the ferry services at a paid parking space with the intent that as long as they have paid to park, that they could be. The current ordinance excludes food trucks on any portion of town property, which thus would include paid parking spaces or free parking spaces. But it's a little bit difficult to enforce, as we have a legacy issue of someone parked in that. And I don't want to create a problem here. We want to have just clarification as to how you would like us to proceed. What we could do is the town staff has options that we have drafted that we could bring forward as early as the fourteenth of July, that we clean up the existing one thirteen item. For example, it says it's the tax administrator, which doesn't, isn't happening, but we could make that the planning department. It says that enforcement would be held by X. We could make it by Y. We could clean it all up. But the bottom line, I think the real serious question on the floor is it would have potential intent and unintended consequences. So I want to be clear as we talk about that. Do you want us to bring forward a draft that clearly reads as it does today, that there'd be no itinerant merchants on public property? If that's the case, it would have some
Yeah, I'm I'm just looking back at my old notes, because we've we've done a lot, we've discussed this a lot. Um, I could, there were comments from you both on the fourteen vote, um, October in twenty twenty four, so was it feedback or every, um, BBA restaurant owners paying food trucks. I'm not sure that we got that. Do we still want to consider their or engage with them before, before or something like that? I'm just going out there. I'm sure we did, um, receive feedback from Sheldon, like their research and polling. Um, I don't recall if all of that was brought back to me or not, but it was on table. But the information.
Okay.
I think that we had intentions to bring it back in December, and then it was tabled, and if we had thought about it past that, but I know that information's there. I believe it was sent to the board and makes Okay. But I'm happy to follow.
We could reset that, actually.
Okay, I can probably
One of the things that we were, in terms of food truck, was generated.
That was a piece of consideration, though.
To be honest, what I, what I don't want to do is stir up a problem for us that is non-existent, because we have a lot of moving parts today, a lot of plates to spin, and I want to be sensitive to the needs of this board, to the staff that has to execute what you already have placed, and be respectful of the community. But I'm gonna ask a question that I think I know the answer to. It's not the intent for flavor of this board to allow vendors to randomly purchase parking spaces specifically along Front Street and or other areas, and then, and we know that, we are trying to determine how to help enforce it fairly and equitably across.
Yeah, okay.
We believe that that is that our assumption, is that
Right.
the intent of the board is to not permit that.
So. The issue, though, is our ordinance, and our ordinance is so far out of whack for what's going on in our community.
It's dated, correct?
It's it's so dated, and there's so many parts of it. There's so many things going on in our community that happening that basically fall outside of our ordinance. One in particular, even the farmer's market, the farmer's market, the way that our ordinance reads is that every single vendor of our farmer's market is out of compliance and should not be vending, because it's not a government sponsored event.
So we're on county property. Farmer's market is on county property, and it's been given permission by the county.
But it's not sponsored by them.
It's not necessarily to be a sponsored event. It's not on town property, which is what our ordinance is looking at.
Okay. So then the other concern I have is food trucks within a fifteen minute space of the downtown or after the you could say we don't want to pay for a space, but then what happens after a five year, our food trucks allowed, but after that time? Our food trucks are out of downtown on Front Street, or food trucks are out on on Turn Street.
It's a, the great question. The 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 way the ordinance reads is those provisions are not permissible on town property, only permissible on private, and we're interpreting that parking spaces and or any other town parcel, there'd be an exclusion there unless the town waived that exclusion, for example, a special event. Uh, we were, we we don't want to hurt ourselves. If we, we're having an employee appreciation luncheon, we would be able to do that at whatever one of our parcels. So, for example, the the big issue is the declarative statement that on town property that food trucks aren't to, or itinerant merchants aren't to operate on town. And that's what led to this conversation of the itinerant merchant trying to pay for parking, so. So we're just trying to address, the question is, would you like to do the whole review and enhance and deal with the whole project today? Or would you like something that would get you through the year and be enforceable? That's that's really, I think, is the juxtaposition for the cross the
Natural worry with it is publicly owned or controlled highway, street or alleyway, or publicly owned or publicly controlled properties within the town. All.
Yes.
I mean, I guess another element in the room is, you know, the fish town one. It's been there for so long without being enforced, and he's not, it's not a problem in that specific situation.
But he has, he has come in front of us about that.
Yes, he has. He has, and he suggested some alternatives about looking at, uh, the difference between roving food trucks and invited food trucks and this
private land, private property.
Yeah, and he he also, you know, they also said that, you know, he he would pay for for the truck to be be parked there in front of him. He came, yeah, and I, once again, I think we did take the issue, but I don't think we resolved anything on that.
My thought was to not allow any food trucks downtown, but then set up a mechanism where food trucks could be placed in town with a permit. Let's say last of preview, but then go forward to planning board or something, to then basically say, this figure food truck is allowed at this location, because we think this is proper for the town, and we think this is a proper place for a food truck. That permit would be good for that year, because then that would also help even the farmer's market, because they also sometimes have food trucks that sit on Broad Street, adjacent to the park. And, um, you know, I think we're gonna have to have some mechanism in place, because there's so many instances where food trucks are, you know, like where they are, or want to see them there, or we don't. Yeah, I don't know if we want to see someone getting that, you know, big food truck in front of the possum, or someone selling, you know, shaved ice downtown, or maybe we do, but maybe the maybe the the middies that are looking at this can decide whether or not they think that this is a good idea or not. And then we also had discussions about power. Where does that power come from? Have you, have you, have you, uh, protect citizens for courts and so forth? There's, there's lots of that, I think.
Clean up, insurance liability.
Exactly. Which is why we gave you that, bro.
That is true.
Right. And I I liked an idea
Because it's spreading.
That, um, Joey proposed about the invited food trucks, that they that you could only have invited type food trucks in and store this year with requirement for electric plug-ins, or food truck and brick and mortar eat restaurant, and if that brick and mortar restaurant doesn't want them there, they can't be there. Um, and he used the example of if Aqua would allow Backstreet to have a food truck, that would be okay, and if not, they wouldn't have it. But it could only be an invited situation, like Fishtown does, inviting food trucks and not a roving one that just sets up, and then renting a parking spot downtown and rents the parking spot.
So that tax delivery one used to be, you know, like when they have, they only did whatever, all these food trucks is right on Middle Lane. What, is that approved because of their permitted?
It's an event, it's an event based, yeah.
Same thing with the power invasion. It related, that's a different story, because you know you're gonna be there. But a temporary merchant permit, I mean, is that what you're talking about? I don't want to take it just through the end of the year, but to kind of resolve it so that we don't have to come back and face it in twenty twenty six. I mean, what it, we don't know what you're proposing, so I guess we have to listen to what the staff has to say.
No, the staff, this this staff, we started that process with the end of fall, and I've asked the planning director. I think he asked, he had a question, or something.
Okay.
So what I've heard um, does concern me a little bit, because what you're, what I have interpreted is that if you're if you're on the inside, then it's okay for you to do this, but someone looking to come in from the outside may have difficulty. And I, it's, me, it's an equitable thing. It's it's almost like the climate change. And I think where we are right now, and I appreciate that the manager's offered, I I think we can develop something in the short term to get us through, as we mentioned, through the rest of this year, that, uh, which will allow us to work on the bigger piece. Um, but as it states in there right now, um, being on public property, it is, is, as you said earlier, there is the elephant in the room. And until we have something else worked out, uh, we, uh, today, um, since this brought up about Fishtown, we even contacted, uh, the owners of the parking lot next door today to see, are you, are they amenable to even having a discussion only for us to find out that, uh, the owner of of the business had reached out to the church, uh, recently uh, to see about what it costs to rent or lease some of those spaces. And of course, they have data that shows what those spaces are worth. So that tells me that there's been some thought that that this may occur in the short period, in the short, and until we get something resolved on a much larger scale. Um, but, um, or what you're wanting to do, and I don't mean disrespect to the board, but the last time we brought a revision, and then we brought another revision, and then we brought another revision, and we still were not there. So, uh, before, I would, I I think we can put together the short version to get through again. And I would like us to come back and look at this longer version, because for us, it's creating another portion of our permanent system, and that means we have to have the definition, have to have the procedure. We have to have a lot of things there. Then we have to figure out what we're gonna charge people. Once we figure out what we're gonna charge people, we have to get with this wood and finance department department, because then we have to change the fee schedule. In addition to all of that, one of the things I've mentioned, uh, to the manager is that we do a, a, a video, an instructional video, again, for folks who want to operate food trucks. If you're wanting to operate a food truck in twenty twenty six, and both of this is what you're gonna need to do. Um, I I think that would be the process in which I have. Um, some of the insurance, the body and so forth, that's a little bit different for us, and we need to work through some of that. But I think we have, uh, some, a recommendation that would get us through until December. It may not be palatable for everyone, but it's fair to everyone based on what it is now. And we'll work towards trying to hand in on on these other issues, which I think not hard to say that not one of those makes sense and so forth. And maybe it is where it's a, uh, instead of, um, ma- maybe instead, we go and look at the U D O right now and make a change in U D O to where it's a special it's a special use permit. If you want to put it on this town street, boy, boy alley, uh, be, just be prepared, folks. Yeah. There's, that's the, there's just so many options that y'all run through, it's hard to grasp. We're Changing the ordinance such as this, what we have to do is want to come with notice and and, uh, that process pass.
If it's in the town code, we does not go to the planning board. It would go to the board's commissioners and the public, in a public hearing, and that would just just a standard item for discussion and consideration.
Not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing.
Which is one of the reasons we were trying to do a low level shift for you, to make it move the conversation.
However, I do believe you will see several public comments. So you can clearly not
And we we were trying to be as thoughtful as possible of trying to find solutions for those impacted, the seater, private houses.
Right. And is that just that one situation that seems to be the main one that would need another option?
We believe so, so far, and to be very candid, because that was so visible, the other vendor said, well, I saw it. I thought it was okay. That's why I did it. And I want you to to be able to hear that. And when we walked up, it was Elizabeth and I, we were very kind, and the individual setup were very understanding, but they said, well, we saw it, so we just assumed it's okay. We went to the planning department, trying to take all the steps, and that is what led us to today.
But they've invested money and things of that nature to be out there. So when we talk about, look, I guess we need to hear what the staff has to say, and that's a lot of fortunately. We have that for them.
We needed to have this conversation to determine if you want us to do anything at all. We would recommend bringing a phased or simple solution on July fourteenth, which allows us to uphold the existing ordinance, which clearly today says not on public property. Try to find a solution for that one intended or unintended consequence, and then move on and then deal with this at the end. Because if you don't, you're gonna see monkey do monkey, monkey see monkey do is gonna start to replicate itself, and that's
Not like what Kyle said, you want to be able to find an equitable solution. And not just the downtown, but anywhere where a food truck can go.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because I can see this happening on Cedar Street at some point. Um, with what we have. It's gonna do it in Cedar, it's gonna do it out, oh, it's gonna do it, sure. Some people who spoke very clearly, especially younger families, is they really like to be able to do it. Change.
Today. You want us to go ahead as a board, give the direction?
Would you like us to bring a simple, a cleaner or updated version of the existing ordinance forward for your review on July fourteenth? And so we will.
They're starting to sound like an attorney when you throw in reasonable and sensible all that. G S, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I I liked it. Y'all might need some more legal advice.
So so in my defense, so in my defense, So, so in my defense, so in my defense.
Alright, so I think we need to get a motion for, to bring this back to the board at the last meeting.
Especially after.
A cleaner scenario.
Speaking about how it fit in my staff. Yeah, with respect to what you're taking in.
Are you looking for one that, are you looking for, do a short term one or a full term that bill the books as?
I'm, I'm fine with you, um, authorizing the manager to let us do the short term, but also add that we have to do the long term as.
As well, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. And I think that gives us an opportunity, sir, to speak with our manager and some of the rest of our staff. I'm, I may kind of like an option that I hadn't really discussed with my staff yet, that's been brought up today. I'll speak to council as well, may, may assist and may help us get their.
We gotta speak in language, though. Alright, so we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Cooper.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Cooper.
Did he? I did. Oh, no, I did, right?
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all of those have the same right, we're gonna move on to staff comments.
I have quite a few.
I know, I got the packet, let's get moving.
So, what I'd like to do is discuss three very important items that have been elevated in time, week two. And one is Broad Street, the importance of that roadway, how we handle it, paving patch. The second item is to bring you up to speed on a very complex and lengthy overview of USDA that we've tried to condense, and it's the USDA waterline project status and the costs that are going on. And then number three, I know it may seem low level, but there's been a legacy issue with four trees. There are live oaks located on Front Street, seeded at one, two, three, one, two, five, and one, two, seven, Front Street, and it likes some direction. Each of these three items, so we'll begin with item number one, favor patch, and it's not as simple as one would think. When we, when I came on staff, the beginning of April, we identified that the USDA projects, which is Three Prongs Water, Sewer, and Stormwater, were running behind schedule. Simultaneously, the patching, according to the contract, requires all town streets to be patched within thirty days of cut, and all DOT streets within fifteen days of cut. I'd like to point out that these roads have been open since September of twenty twenty-four. The issue that you have on Broad Street is the amount of traffic and the amount of substantial impact of Broad Street. We started on the West End, and we told you before Memorial Day that we were starting on the West End, and we were excited and enthused and hopeful that they'd be coming down Broad to make patches. The open cuts did not pass the compaction test, so they're out re-compacting the open cuts. We're also at the point that's considered to be the fifty percent plus road, that more than fifty percent of the street is not torn up. USDA says when more than fifty percent of the road is torn up, doesn't make sense to come back and patch it. It allows you the freedom to actually pave. And I think if you even look at the faces of the people in the space, the general constituency assumption is that these roads that are currently torn up are gonna be asphalted. You also have this patch weave, there's cuts that are major, cuts that are perpendicular, cuts that are running full length horizontal. The conversation is, do we pave, do we patch, do we do a blend of both? The question that lies today is, we were pushing forward to try to get these patches in. I had asked, can we just come back and do edge to edge paving? Engineering has gone from one direction to the other, and now has come back, here's where you are. That the amount of work in this transition of going from one contractor to the other has slowed everything down. There's also underground conflicts, because of all these underground conflicts, we had a choice, and the choice that was presented to us was, do you wanna try to push and have some of these patches put in on Broad Street? Or do you wanna wait another ninety to one hundred and twenty days all summer? And then pave the road edge to edge when it's all done at the same time? The other issue is, there's gonna be a public perception that if we come in and patch, for example, a water section, and you get it patched, there's gonna be, I guarantee you, there'll be a section of that highway that you're gonna come in, two to five or eighty, seven days later, and dig it right up, because you're gonna be coming right under it with sanitary or storm. So, there's no good win here. So do you wanna patch it and get the negative fallout that you came behind and had to redig it up? Or do you want us to try to communicate the messaging that this road is going to be torn up, and many of these roads would be torn up for another ninety to one hundred and ten, one hundred and twenty days? And that is a hard conversation to deflect. There's just the simple philosophy, then we get into the costing.
I don't wanna say pay, but I don't wanna get hit with the cost on the cigarette line.
The contract already has baked into it, action of the past. The problem is, it's going to be trying to get the messaging out that the overall paving has to be delayed because you've got more underground work to do.
We'll see. Well, we could, if we, if we did delay paving, we could use the money we would've spent on patching to pull it.
Correct, you did, double patching or paving, right? I'm, I'm gonna pay you.
If we go to paving, what, what's the timeframe for paving?
Again, it's in this email, not until October, and it could be after, so you're gonna get, I wanna, I wanna be clear to everyone at this table. If you think today is hot outside, wait till the feedback you will receive from the residents that have had to navigate this all summer. It's, the temperature of that conversation will turn up, you have to be prepared for it. And we have to try to communicate it with signage, with PSAs, however we can, but no matter how much you put out there, the conversation will still get lost. I wanna be very open.
I think they're very open.
There you go, man.
But I do think if this, if the community and you guys were trying to save money, or that it may somehow actually make sense financially not to waste that money on patching, waiting to do the paving. I think they'd be, I think they'd, uh, that's, uh, that's my, my opinion.
So I wanna share with you that my first experience with the farmer's market communicated with a lot of residents was over the weekend, working the booth, being apart, standing around talking through the singular, no one talked to me about the booth, all they said is, oh, you're the new guy, wow, when are you gonna pay? And so that is, so that was my whole morning on Saturday, but I hear you. That's right, they actually blamed, they said, we have a thing for that, we call it over time, is what they said to me face to face. And so, we were having conversations, Elizabeth and I were working together, trying to, 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 to explain that conversation. So, hear you, so we have, any other questions about the time?
Yeah, October, put it to. I mean.
That's.
One thing about asphalt is that there's a time for it, and October, kinda iffy, there's a cold, they did asphalt, not.
No, sir, we pay always through December, and the plaque badge plants don't normally shut down till December. So the problem for most municipalities, and I'm not trying to argue with you, they, they, they put us off till that period because they'll do the major multi-lane highways all summer, and they push us into that October period. When they tell me October, that usually translates in my world to November or December fifteenth, and they're usually in paving right before Christmas. And that's what I'm highly concerned about, is this October could translate into November, and then, well, Thanksgiving hit, we're gonna get you between twelve one and twelve fifteen. That may actually occur.
No, I'm not trying to over, but I'm just saying, I know that, you know, there's always a time for, for asphalt.
And they're normally running pretty good through the end of December, then they shut down through the, they, they tool down at Christmas, and through the first two weeks of, uh, first two weeks of January. But I'm afraid that if they tell you October, it may not be up.
I think when we, we, we also have to consider the fact that we're, we're investing, we're borrowing twenty-five million dollars to do, to do a major project. That's gonna come out to principal interest, to about a billion dollars a year when we start taking on that, uh, B and I. I think we have to be rational, we have to recognize that, we have to stand up and say, we have to do it the once, right? Now, I think Mark and his guys, who he's, can do a lot of help, and, and, and by doing as much maintenance as we can with a, with a rotary brush, keeping it aside if we can, not having the rocks, whatever, it's gonna take some internal maintenance. And the best lighter maintenance, I cannot sit here and, and, and do, spend money on asphalt, even with the slightest hint. We're gonna have to tear it back up in six months, that's my blood this month, I just can't, so. I, I, oh, hell, anybody. Sixteen years after I promised Carl, uh, Kyle, that we'd have it paved, that's because we have a fight with this construction man, he would kill me. My blood would boil if, if we had done that, and then we were starting to tear it up to water and, it's just, none of it was right, I'm doing what right.
So hearing, hearing all of that, I'll pause the conversation, advance to topic two, which would theoretically re-infer, reinforce your opinion of topic one. So if you'll pause topic one and go to topic two. So topic two. When bids went out for the waterline project itself, the engineer's estimate was six million dollars. Your lowest bid aimed at six point. At that time, the town looked to reduce the segments of work, and you reduced the first proportion of the project down to get it close to six million. The last report we had, Sunland had completed around fifteen percent of the work, and was dramatically, dramatically behind schedule. To allow the project to move forward, we have decided to try to shift that work to TA loving. That is the second and lowest bidder. I'd like to point out to you that TA loving on the same buying of work bid fourteen point eight. That's a factor of two. So, Sunland bid six point nine. TA loving fourteen point eight.
Sunland is bonded for that amount and for performance.
But, if you go to the second vendor, they will be performing the work at their predetermined bid amounts.
That's a good suspicion.
Or, you are gonna have to reduce the scope of work so dramatically that upwards of thirty segments plus minus, many segments of the project would be reduced because, if you're looking at the fact pattern, the, the fair reasonable estimate is probably the fourteen million dollars, which is why the contractor is not performing at six million. They didn't have the proper resources in position. And so here you are with all these conversations, so should, and this number's moving as we speak because we're validating numbers, we're validating segments, and I want you to have this, the email that I sent, shared with you on Friday at nine forty-six AM. That was the best estimate that we had on Friday morning, we're trying to hone this number in, but the bottom line is, if you would like to complete the actual design plan waterline project, we're plus or minus five million dollars short.
That is, oh. What legal, what legal aspect, I mean, they're, they have not fulfilled the contract. So are they obligated to?
Oh, sure.
You know, the plan.
I, 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 I do.
And they are bonded, and they are bonded, that, that's our remedy, is, is against the performance bond.
But how long does that take to resolve?
A long time. Stories.
Yeah, and.
Money.
And construction litigation is notoriously slow, because then you get into the finger pointing, why is the estimate only six million dollars instead of fourteen?
And you get into damages on TA loving, because it's delayed because somebody has performed on that part.
Right. It's a mess.
So the intent, the original intent when we briefed you a month ago, was to transfer the project from party A to party B. But in that transference, we have unearthed all these pieces of detail. And if you're going to go to the bonding company and hold the primary contractor to the T, that is a time limit, so I won't speak to that, I'll let the attorney.
So, so what shortfall will we be at, what, what projects will we be able to?
About fifty.
Cancel out.
About fifty percent.
Actually probably greater than.
You're gonna lose half of it because you're paying more.
You're paying more than twice.
And the USDA will need us to confirm that they won't, they won't grant us or lend us any more money.
We don't know all of those answers, we're working on that real.
Yeah, even if we do.
Pay it back, yeah.
This made it from a million dollars to being two a year.
Even if they instruct someone, process will be slow, at least at some point if we win, we're gonna get the money back, we'll get the money.
What do the USDA say, like, is there anything where are we asking, or are we planning on asking them, what happens if you have to execute a bond? Insurance, the bond claim.
We had a phone call on that same exact topic and conversation. No one wants to go that path if there's alternative options. We disagree, which is why it's in writing, emailed in advance, and this is a process.
Sunland has not offered any type of, uh, or mediation, basically say, we could use this, or any of that.
If you would like a more lengthy presentation on all the steps that have been exercised, Greg Mashaw has offered to come to the meeting, and we will work through all of those pieces. There has been conversation upon conversation to the, to the point of implausive. We're also to the placement of, we're running out of tools to move the needle.
They're either unable or unwilling to perform, and they've been encouraged, they have been demanded, they have, I mean.
As a bonding company, you know about.
They've, the bonding company's been.
In our progress reports, the bonding company has been briefed, and we were discussing whether or not we were gonna send a letter to the bonding company indicating.
You answered my question, no.
They've not, they've poorly put on there, it's necessary.
Again, I wrote the progress, they sent the letter, did send that.
I can't understand, sorry.
Oh, really, did send that progress report to the bonding company, um, notifying them of the slow progress. Um, you know, we've been sending out letters from time to time asking about the progress. We did fill one of those out, sent it back to them. That's all I did so far. But I think the question on the floor is, have we instructed our team to send a direct notice? Have we fired the mission to the bonding company? The question is, no, not yet.
We need to.
Well, yeah, with that, you think that could get someone to do, maybe?
Which is why you were receiving this, and because we now, Houston, we have a problem.
I apologize about this, it's, a lot of things that would earn any works off anymore enjoyable today.
Did you?
We could have, no, we did, so, fr- frankly, time is a little bit on our advantage of us compared to money, which we do not have.
Right, right.
But we got contracts.
Correct.
You know, bonded, bonded, right.
So would you like the staff to go ahead and execute that, Ma?
I would.
There's, uh, is your firm, the highest, I'm not so high, excuse me, is your firm the best one to press this type of contract, or should we have especially, uh, legal advice and design?
To, to put the bonding company on notice, yes, sir, we, we can do that, I can do that, it's certainly a heavy duty construction litigation.
Which it will.
Which, which it may very, very well, we would need to negotiate somebody else. Which it may very well, we would need to negotiate somebody else.
Special counsel.
Special counsel, yes, sir.
And our toxic life of damages typically awarded in these type of issues way of expensive now.
Yes, sir. Well, you've got to remember, you've got the performance bond. So once we put the bond company on notice, you know, the bond company is obligated to either force Sunland to finish the project or to see somebody else to come in and do the project. And that's when you get into your delta on the, you know, we get four million dollars worth of work or six million dollars.
The bonding company is responsible for paying.
Yes, sir.
But it certainly will not be, it will be a big, a big, a big, a big damage.
So we were trying to avoid it, I think, how do we?
And, and Matt, I don't, I have no criticism of your, not only that, you have a decision to criticize that. This war has a big issue.
We may need to go into closed discussion on the board team to discuss the impacts of this conversation. So if you want, what I would say is, I hear you clearly that we would prefer not to patch, dig, and repaint on issue one. We will take the criticism that comes with doing the right thing first, the first one. When it gets into item two. But when it gets into item number two, because I want to point out that the intent here, that the path you all went out was just a patchy road, it wasn't to perform at the edge. It's because we brought that question up that the destruction has been so severe. That's what led to this point in time. You had planned on patching. So now we're going to wait. Now the next, we'll bring up this conversation with greater detail, either in open forum, in closed meeting, necessary and permissible, or a combination thereof on seven fourteen. But you will need to know more by July fourteenth on the status of the USDA projects and their options.
And I hope we can at least follow your process with these special counsel to that process.
Yes, sir.
So are we moving forward in terms of the bonding of the contact?
No, we're, we're back here at the bonding.
Thank you, I speak to your staff and counsel before, um, before information.
We have a lot to discuss between today.
Do you want to have your question?
Do?
We need to get you on the paper, do better video. I'm not kidding, I have not.
While building, so.
That is good.
I think I should be married.
I'm here for you, saving money.
So the third and final of them is the most smaller project in the question that we. So it is my understanding that the two of the three property owners impacted with this request on Front Street are co-tenant co-owners of the Davis House and are concerned about the three, the three or four live opens that impact them most. But there's four total trees from the corner of Moore between one, two, seven, one, two, five, and one, two, three Front Street. All the granular detail is in this email, was in the attachment, and the request has been made to relocate those trees. Based on our assessment, at least three of those four trees are in violation of the town's current tree limits. They're too close to the corner. Two of them are too close to each other, and only one of the four trees can remain if you upheld and ratified against your current. The question is, I understand the importance and sensitivity of trees here. Prior to day one hundred on the job, I would like to get to day one hundred on the job. And I'm going to speak your guidance as to the board's pleasure with the four trees that are currently healthy and thriving in the corner of Front.
Have they been trimmed, so their roots can be trimmed? They can't be trimmed?
No, ma'am, they're in violation of your ordinance. I believe if you look at the ordinance in its entirety and look at all the documentation that's been provided, at least three, if not all four, should be relocated. And then they would also be historically representative of Front Street during its installation.
But what does that have to do with trimming?
The trees are already approaching into the existing Yopons, there's evidence there. There's also historical evidence within their packet. It has a negative watershed drop on the existing Yopons, there's a substantial.
Yeah, yeah, I was getting a little distracted, I, I, I think I had trouble getting through all the information, but I.
Came first, the Yopon of the Yopon.
Uh, I'm just curious about, because sometimes in certain situations you can trim and then go and put the rear system up and keep it in that trim to be compatible with their specific situation, realizing that the trees are also in violation, but. And when we talk about relocate, you don't relocate a tree that they haven't survived in our climate, quite frankly.
Very familiar, spaded multiple. There's a time of season to do it, and then there's a high risk based on the caliber of the tree. And then there's the cost to relocate that tree as well.
Yeah, I think.
One of the owners, one of the owners thinks you should tell this.
Uh, two of the three owners have been very communicative, and they're the ones that have provided you the email and the attached addendum packet and have been asking for those trees to be moved. Um, to be very candid, have not spoken yet to the owner at one twenty-seven who has installed two of their trees. They think that they're not feeling really well and haven't been able to get up with those.
The owner of this three hundred and twenty is out because they were half of them. Grand of course, they're that long years now. They would be a part of town.
The trees have been planted since two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen?
Yes, sir, it's in. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just, because it's so, it's so critical, we had to find out. Yeah, we had to find the date of the planting, because if the trees were before twenty fourteen, when LDO went into position, that wasn't happening.
So the Yopons are having some age on that.
Yes, most.
What about the trimming of the Yopons, is that still within, or I mean, they're kind of getting?
The Yopons are on private property and are maintaining the private property.
And with the will of the town, that it's keep the trees, repeat its liability or possible litigation.
That was how this all started, was an attorney reached out to the. And again, be aware that three of the four have been deemed in violation of your existing. The three have to. One of the four can remain. Because if you start at the edge of Moore and you make your way westwardly, either the third tree is greater than the thirty-five feet from the corner or the fourth tree is greater than thirty-five feet from the corner. But neither the third nor fourth tree are fifty feet apart, so they both can't remain. You have to pick which one you want. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mark will tell you, that the Tremendous Volunteers stake trees three and four, and they were placed there, and then the property owner came in and put trees one and two in, which are too close to the corner.
So would they be coming after us for violating our own ordinance? Are we inconveniencing them as a special circumstance where the trees are going to approach them?
I have an opinion, which rather should be too, because they, they reach out to your office.
John does not deal with that one, this is.
So historically, this was before I got here. There was communication from the residence attorneys proposing the threat to their property and that they had contacted us to take action if we didn't remove the trees.
Is it because these trees were put there without their permission? Or?
It's because the trees were put there in violation of the ordinance and has a negative impact upon their property, their existing spoilage, also their visual obstruction.
If we had to take those trees down, we're going to have to have a plan to replace with like four ponds of many, because we're going to have a major.
Which is again, you understand why, if I unlabored and made the call, there's no win here. Administrative team.
We did.
Wow.
The only way I could get on this one is if I accidentally drove it over the trees. Did you catch that? The only, the only good way is if I accidentally drove the baby rolling machine. On accident, so there's no win.
I can't drive it, so that makes good sense. Uh, let me get the phone to run over them. Where are we rehoming these?
I understand, but that's why we have some money to budget for more trees.
I don't think we need to automatically say that the trees come down. I think we need to see what's really going to be for reflection.
Well, if you were to rehome these trees.
Mark, where would we rehome?
The last call for, and along with the most out of the future.
Do we have a tree expert that can tell us the probability of survival of these trees?
We can seek that out, but like, it's like past experience. I've moved bigger trees and they've made it, we've moved smaller trees and they haven't made it. It depends on the time of year, the expertise of the spading company, the amount of water that's adequately provided, any external factors. There's so many pieces that you could give a guess, but.
What kind of cost we're looking at, we're expecting, how we're going to, everything, it has a cost.
Thirty hours from the time the truck leaves shop, it's creeping on to two thousand, digging and replying.
So you should assume.
I think we pay three trees fifteen hundred, two thousand.
You should assume at least two thousand.
Two thousand.
Take it to court.
So three of those trees are ours, one is theirs. They're all four of them ours.
Almost, so there's a lot of.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So there was a question of what's the estimated cost? The estimated cost is at least two thousand dollars to relocate.
And that's not the other costs associated with stacking the water and pay attention to them and babying them and.
That's correct. So there's the initial cost for the spade to move its way here, which you have to pay transport. Get here, and that's going smoothly, and then move each of those four units at the same time, have preparatory holes ready to go, spade them out and place them, and then our team will outstake and then monitor them. There's the first question. And she clearly hear where the anticipated relocations are, so.
It's not, I couldn't tell her.
Bastion Hallport area, north side of the museum is very well.
Yeah, nice, nice, nice place.
So there's that, what was the next question?
Oh, all four of the trees.
Oh, do we own them? Yes, that's a great question. The, anything placed in the right way ultimately becomes possession and ownership of the town, whether or not we pay to put them there. We physically put two of those four there. The other two were placed by the property owner, I believe it's the property owner of one twenty-seven, placed the two closest to the intersection.
So we would be.
Would we charge them for moving, because they violated the ordinance?
Same property owner? It was a prior property owner?
I don't know if it was the same prior, I would assume it's the same.
We charge back?
Now, let's ask for clarification, so Mark, did the, did the two trees that are, that are front of Cliff, that were staked out by the volunteers, did those go into storage?
Yes.
Because that is what you said.
Yes, and the other two, one twenty-seven.
So the two trees that were planted first were with, were, they exceeded the minimum distance to the corner. But they were too close together. And that was staked out by the volunteers and installed by public works?
It was contract.
Okay, but, yes, sir, we didn't physically move. So the first tree went in legally, and then the second tree was too tight. And then the pattern was duplicated by the residents of one twenty-seven. And they put a tree closest eighteen foot from the intersection, plus or minus, and thirty-one feet to thirty-two foot from the intersection, which are both in violation, correct, Kyle? Noncompliant according to the ordinance, section fourteen of the L U.
This is about twenty fourteen?
No, sir, well after.
Twenty nineteen.
It's, uh, we actually had the dates of install, Kyle pulled pictures, and then Mark had actual physical dates of state. He pulled, so, uh, two thousand seventeen and two thousand. So it was post L U.
I know.
It's a lot of.
I'm running over the edge there.
It's a tree.
Am I correct in understanding? Two trees in front of one twenty-three and one twenty-five, which were installed by public works, which are in violation of our ordinance.
One of the two.
One of the two is.
Because they're too close.
I would definitely agree with you to say one of the two, don't confuse. So it seems to me that one, one of those trees, we should be responsible to move. Does that make sense? Now, then you've got two other trees that were planted afterwards by the homeowner.
That's what I understand to be fact.
And what is the problem with those two trees?
They're both in violation of the ordinance because they are too close to the corner of Moore.
They're, stop, they're both in violation of the ordinance. So there are two trees there, theoretically, we should address that homeowner about moving.
You can, but I understand that the homeowner is failing at health, but I, I'll answer you, yes, you can. It's in violation and they have been there for years.
Uh, they've been there since nineteen, and they're five years.
That's correct.
I'm not saying necessarily who want to approach them, but maybe somebody who's close enough to them, you know. Talk to them. Probably that.
And the people that are bringing this to our attention are not the homeowners that have the failing health, everyone else.
Concerned with the home, it's such a, it's a big thing. Come on, we, we could just go ahead and do three trees, replant the trees.
Right, with their permission.
Well, not even with their permission, we can do it, right?
So I'll answer you that you, you could move the three trees that are in violation. I still think the best practice is to communicate to the property owner, which we have not successfully been able to do. And I also want to be clear that if you only move the three trees in violation, that I believe you'll still be pursued illegally by the owners of one twenty-three and one twenty-five because the negative impact of the fourth illegal tree, based on the size and type of the tree, is their contention.
Well, then it can be trimmed to not impact them.
I'm not saying that the, the importance of what the person does for a living, but the email, if you would, if you would reference Mr. Cliff Fleet.
Yes.
And read his email dated Friday, July, Friday, June twentieth at four fifty AM. You had me at twenty to three AM. Colonial Williamsburg. And he, he helps oversee the tree preservation and placement and. May want to understand an alligator with whom you wrestle.
Right, it was everything for us.
That, that's what I'm saying to you, that having dug deeply into this without any scuba gear and had to hold my breath under the water in very close, my professional recommendation is to seriously consider the repurposing of these four beautiful trees, placing it in an area that is compliant and that would benefit the community, not cause a dispute.
And what trees should be planted afterward, would be?
There, if you, there would be no trees because at that period, they already have two very vibrant, healthy Yopons on the private side, which are period sensitive and historically active.
So, and how can we encourage new other homeowners from putting trees down there? Because there were two that are down there that wasn't part of the town, that's nearby this individual where they live.
Yes, I, I would say to you that, and this is not a criticism, because I guarantee you, it's happened during my tenure as well. But when a tree goes in, it's in violation. But when a tree goes in, it's in violation of the ordinance, we would take swift action.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if that you, we have a lot going on. I'm not criticizing any of the predecessors or administrative or public works teams at all. But this conversation about where a tree should go, the type of tree that should be planted, should it be between the curb and the sidewalk? Should it be behind the sidewalk? Where is it placed in its circumference type and style is a very serious question.
Would we be willing to consider offering them that we would trim all four trees consistently at a time? Because if you trim it a certain way, then the roots won't grow. Maybe as far as I think they will.
We'll take whatever you want us to do, but I believe.
I tend to say rip out trees right now.
That might be a great question, those are the trees that we've.
Well, this particular case, rehoming a tree, hopefully successfully versus just chopping it and and not even replanting the tree in that particular case. Well, I think more trees are being planted in that one particular case.
People would start complaining and wanting us to relocate, you know, relocate this barrel cat, relocate this tree, relocate, you know, and that is inconvenient for me.
Well, if it's in compliance, then we wouldn't have, within the ordinance, we wouldn't have that argument. They could try it, but then we would have a better way to stand on the sand. Sorry, it's going to stay there within ordinance. We're not violating town ordinance is on town property, but in this particular case, we're saying openly that there is a ordinance violation here. So, put this to bed and Sharon to bed. Would you like to rehome some tree? Trim the trees? Contact the owner about the two trees they planted? Austin, Sharon, the cost of rehoming those trees because it's expensive.
How much range do you need to be?
We assume that the cost is at least two thousand dollars to relocate.
That must include.
Two thousand to relocate.
We, we think at this point it might be two thousand total.
Why, oh, two thousand?
To rehome all four trees?
We believe that's the answer.
Okay. Is that on the high side? Okay.
I would suggest that we draft whether to hold. Staff has determined that all four trees are in violation of the ordinance. And supports. Both of us.
Well, let's. Other than the one that's complaining.
Of course, two.
Oh, there's two complaints already. So there's two people that are complaining, so it's not just one homeowner.
There's three properties involved in the trees.
So all, whatever owners is in, we need to have communication.
So we can, I can reach out to the owners of one twenty seven, so pull it up and we will send that notice. Because I've been to the site.
All the notice I've called.
I just want you to know, I've been to the site multiple times and can't find it. And what I've been told is they're not well enough there. And so we're trying to track down them actually. If you do, that would be barrier.
One of the, so your duty is
Or if you would just provide me the number, I would gladly do it. I just don't have a waiting.
They're very reasonable people. And I'm not going to say that's correct.
Well, that's, I don't know if that's accurate. That's what the neighbors keep stating. I can't.
So this is not going to go away, but hopefully, what is the, the goal of the conversation with the one person, so that two that are very grumble?
I, sometimes when there's acknowledgement that there's a problem, you know, we all come to the table, we can talk about other solutions that may not have been reflected in this very thorough documentation.
Our intent to violate our home.
Right, I mean, I think it's very important to acknowledge that they're concerned, acknowledge that there's a violation, start those pieces of communication.
And I would even tell you that the trees, that the the last two trees to go in have a larger stock than the first two trees. The last two trees just got a fairly good amount of money out of the stall. They were mature and they're beautiful trees, so. But those two trees are definitely in clear violation and somebody we could have or notified them that they were not compliant at the time and we didn't. And so we would, if you have Judy Adams' telephone, I'm glad we take it, your call, we'll reach out. We have clear direction from Gordon Beverly Smith and Cliff Fleet. We do need to hear from the Adams and property owners of one twenty seven.
No pressure, no load, Judy.
I save that direction on that.
So do you want me to invite them? Because their trees are in violation, but what would you like me to, I'll reach out to them, but what, what action would you like? To invite them, get their feedback and.
I would just talk to them and say
Roger that.
Good to know. Alright, so you've got clear direction, so one, two and three are all taken care of. Staff comments are all done. Got that, we're system that?
Days now.
Because I'm about to adjourn the meeting. Alright, meeting adjourned. Can I get a room to adjourn the meeting? All the papers say I, thank you for all that you did.